Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District Six.
Joanne Kogle, District Seven.
Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor.
Tyson Begley, Post Ten at Large Counselor.
Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your city council.
May ninth, city council meeting. We're glad to have you with us. And we're going to get to the business of the city momentarily. But we're going to begin as we always do. And that's by asking for God's grace and presence in this building during these proceedings. So I'm going to invite Pastor Tim Jones from Britt David up to the podium. And Pastor, if you'd hit that light, we'll get it turned on for you. There should be a button.
There we go. How about?
Well, push it one more time. Okay, all right.
Y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
Father, we're so grateful for our city. Grateful that you have placed us here to be a part of this community. And as we gather together to conduct the business of this council of our city, we pray that you'd provide us with wisdom. Your word says that you provide wisdom to anybody who asks for it. And so we ask you wisdom that goes beyond our experience, wisdom that goes beyond our age, wisdom that goes beyond popular opinion, wisdom that comes from on high. Father, we pray that you would bless us with that and that you would provide us with peace. Recognize that we have a city that is filled with violence in these recent days. And pray that you would provide that peace. You say that you give perfect peace to those whose mind has stayed upon you. We pray for interim chief Mathis. We pray for his getting started, praying that you would provide favor for him among his officers and among this council that we would be able to work together to solve the problems that we find here in our city. Father, we ask for your blessing on this meeting today and on the days that are to come. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Tim. And thank you, church, for sharing you with us. And I got to say that Britt David does an incredible job. They provide so many different venues for children in our community, particularly during Halloween and then during Easter. And we thank you for your impact on the community. Thanks, sir. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, one God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As many of you saw yesterday, there was a press conference held at the Public Safety Building to introduce to Columbus our interim chief, the individual that is being appointed to sort of be a bridge from our retiring chief to the permanent chief, whom we are in the process of putting together that search for. But I wanted to give the council an opportunity to see Chief Mathis and meet him and hear a few short words from him. And also wanted the public to be able to see Chief Mathis. I'm not going to go too much into his bio because we've splashed that all across every media we could. And he's kind of a humble guy. But we're excited that Chief Mathis has been willing to come sort of out of retirement and take on this challenge. And we ask all of the folks in the community and, of course, all the people around this table to provide him the necessary support for him to achieve success. Chief, you want to come up to the podium and just say a word or two?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to you and the council for allowing me to have this opportunity. I know I've gotten a lot of feedback from people said this is going to be challenging. And I just want to tell you, you guys have some very dedicated police officers at the police department. Yesterday, I'd done a lot of talking. And today, since about 6:00 a.m., I've been doing a lot of listening. And so I just want to tell you that I'm going to do the very best that I can. And I'm going to make you proud.
Well, great. Chief, we are thrilled that you're here. Welcome to the Columbus area. And I'm sure any of these individuals would be willing to tell you that they share our comfort at having you take over that spot. So we're grateful. Counselor Thomas.
Chief, we do want to welcome you as a council to Columbus. And to just reiterate that we have the finest police department in the whole wide world. And we know that we know that under your leadership, we will continue that and move forward. So welcome to Columbus. Now, Mayor, one of his degrees is from Columbus State University.
Yes, it is.
So. Yes, ma'am.
But welcome aboard.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate you making time to be here this morning. All right. Next, we've got minutes for your approval for the April 25th council meeting. There's a motion to approve and a second. Are there any edits, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are received. Got a couple of proclamations this morning. The first one is in recognition of some of our most significantly important frontline medical personnel. And it's National Nurses Month. And Counselor Barnes is going to read the proclamation into the record. If y'all would come forward.
Will all of my fellow nurses please come forward? And while they're coming forward, one of the best decisions I've made, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, was to become a nurse. I have a saying that everybody is somebody's loved one. And we nurses have the privilege to stand by the bedside of so many loved ones of others. And that's a privilege. That's a privilege that we all cherish to be there to provide not only physical comfort, but emotional comfort as well. I know many of my fellow nurses have stood there and has said a prayer when someone has asked for them by the bedside. I see some heads nodding. And so it's really a privilege. And you know, during the pandemic, nurses showed stepped up every day, regardless of their own personal health, to take care of other loved ones, to include, by the way, a proud dad over there, Glenn Davis's daughter, was in ICU at that particular time. And so there is a sense of pride and a huge sense of giving back to humanity that we nurses have. And so it's my utmost pleasure every year to read a proclamation for my fellow nurses. And it reads thusly. And I'd like for you to say after the proclamation who you're representing. Whereas nearly four million registered nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession. And whereas over 2,200 nurses serve our Columbus area and Fort Benning community. And whereas the breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emerging healthcare needs of the Chattahoochee Valley population in a wide range of settings. And whereas professional nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized patients. And whereas the demand for registered nursing services is greater now than ever because of the aging population, the continuing expansion of licensed estating technology, and the growth of home healthcare services. And whereas more qualified registered nurses will be needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers in our community. And whereas May 1st to May 31st, 2023 is National Nurses Month, with the thing, you make a difference and nurses make a profound difference. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim the month of May, 2023, as National Nurses Month in the city of Columbus, Georgia. And there's a lot of organizations who are here. So I know they can step up to the microphone and say who they are, who they're representing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Gwendolyn McIntosh. And I'm with the Columbus, Georgia Metro Black Nurses Association. We are a national organization of 113 members throughout the United States of America. We got together to promote nursing, to support research, and to have a sisterhood that would support each other. Now, on June 10th of this year, our organization holds its Excellence in Nursing event, where we provide nursing scholarships to nursing students. We also recognize a Nurse of the Year, Nursing LPN of the Year, and we also give out a citizenship award. So we are honored to be here. Thank you, Pop Barnes. And I also want to thank Councilwoman Crabbe for recognizing me. And I was nominated to be on the D-Fax Board. I appreciate you for that. But thank you all so very much, and we're glad to be here. A lot of our work is in the community still. Some of us are retired, but we're recruiting because we want to keep our organization active and moving. But we appreciate you and thank you for allowing us to serve you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Demonica Cannon, and I am the president of Kapakai Chapter, Kaiitifas Sorority. Here in Columbus, we are your local chapter. We are an organization of professional registered nurses and nursing students. And we have over 8,000 members across the United States and overseas. If you would allow me, I want to introduce, we have three members here. Mrs. Janobis Overton, she is a charter member. She's been a member of the chapter since we started in 1965. My mother, in the yellow sweater, is the vice president. And Ms. Betty Curran Hudson, she's a life member. And I didn't tell you my mom's name, Daphne Cannon. We want to thank you all for this opportunity, for this presentation. Our motto is service for humanity, and we provide community service in the area. Some of our programs include disease prevention, health promotion, programs for the elderly, programs for children. Anytime that we can be of service, please do not hesitate to call us. Councilman Pop Barnes is one of our fratters. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like for everyone to know, only two organizations in United States Army, and that is my sorority. I'm the only frat chair, my sorority, so. And I think we have Nurses, Inc., don't we? Representative from Nurses, Inc.?
Good morning. My name is Wanda Johnson. I'm here to represent Nurses, Inc., now known as Nurse of Georgia, Nurses of Georgia. So what we do is we serve the community through health and education. So I'm here, our president couldn't be here today. I'm the secretary in the organization. So I just want to thank you, Pops, and the rest of the council for this recognition. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Columbus State University?
Good morning. I'm Dr. Tammy Condry. I'm Director of the School of Nursing at Columbus State. And we are so proud to have Pops Barnes as one of our graduates. We have served this community for over 50 years with supplying nurses to our hospitals, our healthcare agencies, healthcare provider offices. And we continue to do so. In fact, a lot of our faculty couldn't be here because they're actually giving final exams today. And Pops and the rest of us are glad we don't have to do those anymore. So thank you very much. I want to recognize my colleagues who are here. Dr. Gwen Miller, she's our F&amp;P Coordinator. Dr. Chandler Paget is also one of our F&amp;P faculty. Dr. Amy Bell is our Assistant Director of the School of Nursing, working with graduate program. And then Ms. Jessica Bauer is also celebrating Nurses Month. And she's our clinical coordinator. So we thank you so much for your support. We could not do this without your support and without the support of our community, with our clinical agencies and organizations. So thank you.
I'd like to thank Columbus State for churning out so many good nurses. And to be perfectly honest with you, when we went through COVID, the amount of nurses didn't miss a beat. And that's exemplary for the commitment that the nursing profession has. St. Francis Hospital?
Good morning. My name's Elizabeth Later. I'm the Chief Nursing Officer at St. Francis. And I'm here representing our approximately 400 nursing staff at St. Francis who serve this community. And that includes the nurses at the Bradley Center, who give excellent care to the community members in Columbus and surrounding area that have mental health challenges and behavioral health needs. And we are very proud of that work that we do in that community. And believe that it's a privilege to serve that population as well as the other populations that we serve. I appreciate what you said, Pops, about during the pandemic that nurses stepped up, along with others. There were others, even nurses don't work in the vacuum, of course. But nurses did step up. And we always do, we always will. We'll always be here to serve the community and just appreciate the recognition and the support that we get from this community. So on behalf of St. Francis, Emory Healthcare Nurses, thank you. We appreciate it.
And I see the gentleman in the back, could you come up? Just what organization?
Good morning. My name is Carrie Bertram. I'm the Chief Nursing Officer for Piedmont Columbus Regional. And I would like to thank Mayor Henderson, Councilman Barnes, other council members for the recognition this morning. It is a privilege to serve the citizens of Columbus. We have a deep history going back to 1836. And it is our honor to continue that rich history and continue to serve the members of our community. So thank you.
And thank you for coming to present.
Thank you, sir. Anybody we missed? Yes, Counselor Davis. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Barnes, I'm so glad that you brought this before us and recognizing these wonderful people. I'm so glad each and every one of you are here today. And you know, when you're really getting over jet lag and an ambient and all the rest, I don't know what I'm about to say. You probably wouldn't advise me doing that. But you know, you folks, all our nurses, I love my nurses. I love all our nurses. You know, I have a big smile on my heart right now. You're so important to our community. People don't really realize what you go about day in and day out. You really, the old saying, when you walk in someone else's shoes, you get to know exactly what they do day in and day out. And you know, our hospitals, our healthcare professionals, we got great healthcare professionals. But our hospitals and our professionals could not make it, couldn't do it without you all, without our nurses. Our nurses are so invaluable, so valuable to taking care of our people here in our community and providing that healthcare and getting them where they need to be. And what I really wanted to say, I'm so proud of my daughter. I my baby. Forgive me. I saw what she went through to become a nurse. I'm so proud of her. But I also got a chance to see what she went through in COVID in a medical ICU. And as a father, your daughter comes home not, you really don't know what's going to happen to her or transpire over the course. We all, COVID was a serious matter. But having your daughter come in day out, day in, day out, dedicated to take care of people and to just sacrifice herself. And at the same time, coming on, having to deal with that term I learned called code. That was not easy. But I watched my daughter, I was really worried for my daughter. I was really, really worried for my daughter and what she had to go through and what she was doing. But she did it day in and day out, selflessly. She sacrificed and she did it, she did it without willingly. She did it because she knew she had to do it. All I could say was just help somebody smile today. When you go take care of them, help somebody smile. And she was on the front line. And it just, it touches your heart when you start to realize how valuable people are and how the service, that what you provide for people, what it means. It just pops, you and I have had a lot of conversations on that. It just touches you in a way that, you know, and that's why I said my heart is smiling today. But I thank you for that. And you really don't know, you really don't know the depth of the value of people until you understand what they go through day in and day out. And I can't thank you all enough. I can't thank all the nurses in our community for what y'all do for each and every one of us and what you go through. It's not easy. And working that, she worked that, I call it the, well, it was the midnight shift, but those long hours, it's just not easy for a young person to do that and deal with what you have to deal with day in and day out. And just stay focused and keep going to work to take care of people. And like I told her, all I could say is just help somebody, just help somebody smile. Because she would tell me, she didn't know if one of her patients was going to make it. And I've never been in that situation before, but I can only imagine. So that's what I wanted to say this morning. I didn't know how it was going to come out, but that's what I wanted to say this morning. I just wanted to thank, I'm just glad it happened today. And thank you for being here. Thank you for all you do. You're just, you're a great asset to our community. And just keep going, keep going and doing what you do best.
Thank you, Counselor. And you know, I think it hits home because nurses are our daughters, they're our mothers, they're our sons and our fathers, our neighbors. And they're ordinary people that do extraordinary things. So thank you. Come around here, let us thank you properly. I've got a proclamation. If we don't have enough, if you'll contact my office, we'll print some more.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
As many as far as they'll go.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you so much. Hey, buddy. We're here. We're back. I can't do it.
All right. We've got one more proclamation that will be presented. This is for Diversity, Inclusion, and Memory Care Day. I saw Dr. List here. If anybody else is associated with this, y'all please come forward. And Counselor Barnes will read this proclamation presented as well.
And Mayor Counsel, it's my pleasure to read this for Dr. List. And Dr. List, thank you for all that you're doing for Alzheimer's research. And bringing education. And by the way, as we see here, we have Mimi Woodson here. We've had a number of conversations.
I had it down here to welcome you. I didn't know you were coming up with this.
And I asked Mimi to come here because of what she went through. Because she, I told her over the phone, just she's stronger than she feels she is going through the ordeal. And she is a living example of what it takes to have research against this. And the Memory Center is top of the line nationally known. And so it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. It reads thusly. Whereas African Americans are twice as likely to have Alzheimer's disease than white Americans, yet are also less likely to be diagnosed, treated, or included in clinical research trials to show illness. And whereas research treatment outcomes cannot reflect communities of color if these communities are not represented in every aspect of quality medical care, including efforts to fully prevent Alzheimer's disease. And whereas the Columbus Memory Center has gained a national reputation for diversity, inclusion, and broad access to underserved communities. And whereas the Columbus Memory Center, through the Ahead Diversity Inclusion Grant, has awarded $25,000 in grant money to 10 minority churches who showed initiative to fight Alzheimer's within their congregations. Whereas the Columbus Memory Center has offered Alzheimer's education to all Columbus area communities in an even-handed manner since its formation. And whereas every area resident has the opportunity to track his or her brain health annually by obtaining a free memory number. And whereas the Columbus Memory Center's goal is to expand resources and inclusion to underserved communities for the evaluation, treatment, and research into meaningful interventions to eradicate Alzheimer's disease. And whereas the citizens of Columbus, Georgia, who are African American or members of other minority communities, are encouraged to enroll in FDA-approved clinical trials and seek memory care so that there can be an improvement in providing cognitive health to underserved communities and populations. Now therefore, the Honorable Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, BH Skip Henderson III, does hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 9th, 2023, as Diversity Inclusion Day and Memory Care Day in the city of Columbus, Georgia.
Dr. List?
Beware a doctor with a microphone. Let me just say, before I even start, thank you for honoring the nurses. It touched my heart in so many ways as a doctor. But also, Pops, as you mentioned, the COVID care. And Councilman Davis, that my mother fought off, tried to fight off COVID. She succumbed to COVID. And during those days in the hospital, that she could not have gotten more tender, loving care, and my family as well, from the nurses of Columbus, Georgia. And we're eternally grateful. So thank you for honoring them. I just, I do want to mention that. I'll hold off my tears. But I want to thank the city council. I want to thank the city of Columbus. None of this is possible without the leadership of Mayor Henderson and the city council, Pop Barnes, Colonel House, and former Councilman Mimi. We need all your help. You guys have been the leadership behind this. I'm asked all over the world how Columbus, Georgia, could be leading, you know, a true leader in the world in this care. And it's because of the city leadership that we have. That's the whole thing. So I want to thank all of you. If I could write a proclamation, it would be to thank all of you. So we do recognize that underserved communities are not well-represented. The Columbus Memory Center has been somewhere between four and a half times and 20 times more likely to enroll underserved communities than the rest of the country. So that's, you know, prideful, but also shameful. And we want to do better and better. And we received this grant to help teach the rest of the country on how to do a better job. And you're all part of that. Couldn't do it without you. You guys are the leaders. Thank you very much.
Well, I applaud you because you're pushing against, you know, as you know, for centuries, African Americans African-Americans have been experimenting on, and, and so there is a reluctance. But from the healthcare side, I do realize that in order to have competent research, you need to have all ethnic groups. And when you first came to council, I, I knew you had an uphill battle, but I applaud you for being persistent in your efforts and to reach the minority communities. Um, if Mimi would step up, I agonized through the times that Mimi was going through, and I recognized it early when I saw her own health start to degrade. And I asked her, and she told me, and I was able to assist her. It's, it's a long way, and they call it the long goodbye. It's emotionally and physically draining. And the early, and I'd just like for you after Mimi speaks to talk about the drug now, that this is something that has never, this is revolutionary when it comes to brain health. Um, I saw it drain her, but she, she was an ever-loving daughter. Mimi, you're tough. You're tough. And every time I see you or when I hear somebody say that, it, it brings to mind those days when you struggled. And so if there's anyone who's a visible advocate of it, that everybody in this community knows, it's you because you were bold enough to let everyone know exactly the journey that you were on. And, and I would just like for you just to say something about that because Dr. List is, he's inclusive, but the, the research trials will never be as conclusive as they should be. But as, and as an African-American who will be 80 soon, uh, I realize I have a long memory of the atrocities, the sterilizations, the experimentations, the injections with, um, bacteria and whatever, and so it's a, it's, it's, it's a battle. But I commend you for being persistent, looking out for the healthcare of everyone. As it says in this proclamation, even research for everyone. Mimi?
Yes, well, first of all, I want to thank Almighty God for allowing me to be here. I really believe he puts me in the places that I need to be at the time. Um, Pop's been after me, and he's been calling me to tell my story, but I was afraid. I was afraid to tell my story. I was afraid to fa- fit, face the reality that this is in my family, especially in my mom's family. And my own children are asking me today, Mom, am I gonna get it? You know, my dad, he's, he's still good, but from my mother's side, um, both of her sisters died from Alzheimer's. She has another sister right now that's going through it, and I flew to Puerto Rico to give guidance and to get services for them. Um, I'm ready now to help. I had to deal with it myself because it's very painful to see someone you love dying before you, and you can't do anything about it. And, and it's a very difficult time, and if, if you're as private as I am, you know, you don't tell people that you're struggling. You, you hold it within you, you smile, you laugh, you put this mask on, and everybody thinks the world is fine and you're perfect. But in reality, you're dying inside along with the loved one while they're going through their journey. So I thank you, Pop, for staying on me and not giving up on me. I too am afraid to go get tested. And I told Pops, "Pops, the only way I'll do this..."
I'm gonna be there to hold your hand. I want you to know, we already agreed to that. She said, "Pops, could you be there with me?"
I said, "You have to hold my hand, because I really don't want to know. I want to continue what I'm doing now, is traveling and being in the community." But it's important, and I realize it's important for us to know because the only way we're gonna find a cure, the only way we're gonna help our communities, all communities, is by understanding the disease and working with the disease and having patience. I have people call me all the time. I just had a phone call, um, from a young lady in Florida that used to live here. "Mimi, what do I do with my mom? Where do I go? Where did I..." You know, and I had told her some of my experience and some of my connections, hoping that she finds that help, you know, in Florida. So, Pops, thank you very much. And you're right, I, I didn't share. And Gary, you've been with me for a long time. Skip, you know how private I am. I surprise you guys sometimes on things you learn about me, but that's the way I am. I just visited a friend after close to 30 years, and I was sharing something with her, and she said to me, "Dag, Mimi, I know you all these years, and I'm just finding out that?" But it takes a person like Pops, a true friend, someone that sees through you, that really cares about people, to see through your eyes, to read through your soul, to see that you're hurting. So I'm very appreciative. Because of my, and the nurses, I have to thank the nurses too, because my mom died there in Co- COVID. And I was allowed to be with her all the way till she, um, passed away, and the nurses were fantastic. I don't know what I would have done without her, without them, but I'm ready to start. Um, when I come back from Alaska, I'm, I'm ready to start, but Pops has to hold my hand.
I'll be there.
And go through the process, so then I can really, really advocate and really have the resource to knock on the, um, doors and be able to help other families. Thank you all very much. It's so nice to see you. I don't know why, I'm nervous.
Thank you, Mimi.
Thank you for having me, and, and it's so wonderful to see you guys, and I know it's been challenging, but keep the faith. You know, Satan is alive, and we are on a great journey, and we're gonna be there, and Columbus is a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mimi. Doctor, about the drug and, um, about the memory number, which is something that anybody can do right away. Cause when I took the memory number, the lady told me I scored so low that she didn't know what the heck it was.
Now, we know that's not true. Uh, well, let me start with the memory number. This, if you recall, about seven years ago, the city council, under the Mayor Tomlinson's leadership at that time, along with the State Alzheimer Association and the Columbus Memory Center, agreed to have a citywide effort, still the only one in the world. Simple things sometimes, you know, it's remarkable how, why this is not reproduced everywhere. Anybody that wants to come by our office can take the memory number for free, no appointment, no cost, no doctor. The person can keep track of their cognitive health each year with nobody else involved, and that's the best way to know whether they're doing well. And also, as we age, we all have different worries as we go, but we're always wondering if we missed that turn, was it a big moment? If you've kept a memory number each year, you'll be able to reassure yourself each year that you're just fine. It was just a bad moment or a bad day. That's most of what it does, but there's also a large percentage of people that come in that are not thinking as well as they should, and almost always it's correctable. It's depression, anxiety, sleep apnea, side effects of medications. So it lets them know, hey, go see your doctor. You might be able to do better than you're doing today. That's the vast majority. So most people don't have to walk in with any fear of Alzheimer's disease. They just need to see where they are today so they can have a better tomorrow. So please come in, don't call us, just pop in, say I want to take the memory number. It's as easy as that.
The drug?
The drugs. Two, let's not add, add an S. Two drugs. As of last week, we have developed our second drug that actually slows down early Alzheimer's disease by about a third. So come July 8th, the first drug will receive, receive full approval from the FDA. The second drug is a bit behind, so it'll take a number of months before the FDA goes through it. We will have these drugs on the market very soon. So early intervention is the only way to take advantage of these drugs because they don't work later, and we can keep people independent, as part of their families, center of the community, if they take brain health seriously. And it's all because of you guys, so thank you.
And Mayor, thank you for being proactive in this here, because this is really something that was under the radar until the city, you were proactive to have the city involved, because he, Dr. List would have not had the, the oomph.
I don't know. Dr. List's passion carries this initiative throughout the community, and we thank you for that. You've been a tireless, tireless advocate for, for a disease that, that frankly, a lot of folks don't recognize, don't want to, don't want to admit that it may be part of their family. And, uh, so it's, it's difficult, and I appreciate Mimi's cu-, uh, quiet courage that she always shows around this table. But thank you. If you would, come up here and allow us to present this, and thank you. Come, talk to us. Mimi, come around and say hello.
Nephew. Cole, it's good to meet you. Give me a call on what we talked about. Oh, yes.
Appreciate y'all.
Pleasure.
You're talking. Whenever, whenever you're ready, let me know.
You can.
That's what she said. I don't know if I can do that.
It's always a pleasure seeing former Counselor Woodson, and, and we also have former Counselor Anthony, Wayne Anthony, with us as well. We appreciate both of you being here. Um, also wanted to make mention that we have Bruce Huff, uh, who is attending virtually today. Uh, so he will be joining in and votes, and, uh, he can hear the proceedings, and he can actually participate if there's anything he wants to, wants to say. Uh, I'm gonna give the mic to Counselor Tucker, who has requested a, uh, point of personal privilege. Counselor?
Yes. If I cry, I'm gonna blame it on Counselor Davis because he started, um, this emotional wave. My uncle passed away on April 25th. Um, I did a welfare call. I called, um, Derrick Ki-, Assistant Chief Derrick Kennedy. She said she was, she was upset because she couldn't get the call because she was actually in a promotion. So I called the sheriff. The sheriff sent some people over. I called Chief Scarper. And I'm saying this because I never thought that I'd be the person making a welfare call for a 55-year-old, um, who was my uncle, Harold Lewis. I appreciate Drell Short, um, and Sawyer, Joseph Sawyer. When I say these individuals, we always talk about, you know, Columbus Consolidated Government, workers and colleagues, but we're family. And I saw that on that day. People wrapped their arms around me because it was hard, and it's still hard. It's still hard. But on that day, it really was like a nightmare. And when Joseph Sawyer from Public Works called me, he said, "Hey, have you spoke to your uncle?" And I was like, "You know, I was thinking about him this morning. I was gonna give him a call." He said he didn't come to work. And I know, you know, somebody, Pops, we military, you go to work. Like, and, and Drell would say, "He won't sh-" He shows up to work. So I knew it. I s- I stood in the mirror and I knew that he was gone. But I had to be strong in a sense, because I did, but I'm still breaking down, um, for my grandmother, because I'm taking care of my grandmother, um, now. And I didn't want her to know what was going on, and we kept it quiet. We kept it quiet until I was able to get a chaplain over to sit down and talk with her. Um, but I just want to thank the individuals who really came, they really came to my rescue. Katina Williams was there. Joseph Sawyer was there. I mean, these people held my hand. They held my head up. They really were, they were there. Chief Scarper sent people. I mean, everybody came out within five minutes of that phone call. Within five minutes. Um, so I just appreciate everyone for wrapping their arms around me for these last two weeks. Um, I appreciate the mayor, um, Josh and Becca, because you all did the proclamation. Um, and I was apologizing the whole time, but honestly, as, us, from a small family, I'm the baby. But I have so many responsibilities because I take care of everything. So I had to do the planning for the funeral arrangements and everything, but people were so patient with me. But I wasn't patient with myself. But I, I just have to thank, you know, the mayor and Josh and Becca. Um, and definitely, I'm just gonna keep thanking Public Works because that was his family. And I'm saying, they were there from the beginning to the end, and they showed out in large numbers. He also worked with MCP. So thank you, um, Herbert Walker in the backwater, uh, for allowing your, um, employees to come to the funeral out at, at, um, Fort Mitchell. I appreciate that. Um, his mom was very happy to see the love at that funeral service. And I, I, I honestly was in shock that how, how many people, when we pulled in, the, the cars were all the way at the entrance. When we were pulling in, and we had a line, because I called the sheriff, you know, to, to do the procession. And I, I, we was just so amazed, and you never know. This individual felt like he was just a coming person, but he, he did, he touched so many people, and every person said that when Harold was in the room, he made people smile. He changed the atmosphere. He grounded folks. And I, I said, "That, that's, that warmed my heart." So I just, I want to thank, um, them. I want to thank United Way for providing the tables and the tents and everything that we needed. Definitely Chester's Barbecue. I went to try to pay the check. They said, "No, your check is not good here." I tried to pay for the food. I mean, it's, it was, I'm telling you, when you see people do stuff like that, it does something to your heart. I think my Carver High School family, his class of 87, my class, all the classes, um, and I think Skoniers, um, for just being so delicate. Delicate. And I know he's my uncle, but we're 10 years apart. I was born on his birthday. We grew up together. So it's gonna be hard for me, and I, I'm just thankful for my district. I got so many text messages and calls, and people are being delicate with me, and I never expected to ha- have to be here right now. I've never expected that, so... I do believe, I honestly believe that Columbus, even though we are the second-largest city, we're still close in it. We still have small-town roots, and we are family. And, I mean, that's coming from our Columbus Consolidated Government and our community partners. I saw it personally, and it, it shifted the entire, everything that was going on prior to April 25th, it kind of like wiped it out. Not that it's gone for real, but in my mind, I, I felt none of that. All I felt was the love from this community. And we are a loving community, and I will always remember that, and I just want to thank you all, and I appreciate you all, and I, I absolutely love you all from the bottom of my heart. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And our, obviously, our prayers and our, our concern remain with you and your family as y'all continue to deal with, with his loss. All right, and, uh, next we are gonna go to the city attorney's agenda. Before I do, I want to remind everybody that, uh, to, uh, day after tomorrow, actually, on the 11th, is the official renaming ceremony for, uh, what will be called Fort Moore. And, uh, regardless of how you feel about the renaming commission's efforts, the bottom line is we have a front-row seat to history. Be the first time a military base has been named for a husband and a wife, uh, both of whom were dedicated to soldiers and their families, which is exactly what distinguishes Columbus, is our dedication to, um, to the families and to the soldiers that, uh, that train and, and work uh, and live in this community because of, uh, the Maneuver Center of Excellence. So, uh, Mr. City Attorney, your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Got a pretty short business agenda today, but we've got some public hearings. First one up is a rezoning to add a private dog park as a special exception use in general commercial. Uh, and would set the standards and rules for such private dog parks. It's recommended for approval. Do we have any questions around the table? We got planning folks here.
I don't see any.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this, for or against? All right. We'll bring that back at the next regular meeting for a vote. Next item is a zoning item at 9423, 9443, 9463 Macon Road. It's going to General Commercial and SFR 3 with conditions. And this is the right petition. I think I saw Mr. Gibson, the attorney, is here. Are there any questions around the table first?
Oh, yeah, um, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want to let everybody know, we had a, uh, neighborhood meeting. Uh, Will Johnson and, uh, John Renfro attended, and we had a really good discussion. Uh, Austin Gibson was there, had a real good discussion with the, uh, folks that showed up, and there were no objections, it was just more interest in what was, what was gonna be developed there. So I just want to let everybody know that, um, I'm okay with this and ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Renfro, do you want to say anything? Okay. All right. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on that item? We'll bring it back and- We'll bring it back in a couple of weeks for a vote. The last item on our list of official agenda is fishing restrictions, a prohibition on fishing at the Wave Shaper Island in Whitewater Park, which is leased by Uptown Columbus. It's the first reading. We're gonna go around the table, see if there are any questions. And I know Mr. Wolverton is here to make a few comments.
Counselor Thomas?
I do have several questions and comments. I have been contacted by some of the citizens in our community who regularly fish on the river and they are concerned about this prohibition. As I understand it, and perhaps you can make sure that I've got this right, the island that we are talking about is right in front of the powerhouse and this area will go down about halfway, the Riverwalk down in front of the Snovis Building and, and about halfway into the river. Is that correct?
Not exactly, no, ma'am. We're looking at a prohibition that would affect the island, which is roughly 300 feet tip to tip. It would include both going out into the channel where the wave shaper feature is, as well as the, what I call the lagoon area between the Riverwalk and the island, but it would not extend any further than the tip of the island.
So you could fish off the Riverwalk?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And would you?
But, but, just to clarify, but, but not right there at the island?
Right. Okay. Would you, who owns this property? Is this city-owned or is this?
City owns and they lease it to Uptown.
And lease to Uptown?
Yes, ma'am.
And if there are people who are fishing off that island or in that area, who patrols that?
It's not really heavily patrolled. Our Uptown ambassadors do keep an eye on it. We are the ones that open and close the gate each and every day in the morning and the afternoons. Police will keep an eye on it. The Sheriff's Department recently started a Riverwalk patrol, so they've started keeping some eyes on it as well. But it's, it's an area that's, the way the geography is of the island, there's kind of a rock pile on the south end. People can kind of swing behind there and you can't really see them unless you walk all the way out on the island and kind of around to that rock pile side.
And can you tell me what is the impetus for prohibiting fishing in this area?
Yes, ma'am. So Uptown had created, with the city's consent, rules for the island that includes no fishing. Another big one is no jumping from the island into the wave shaper feature, but we had a number of rules that are in place and they've been in place for 10 years now. People have generally complied with that. Every year, we might have one or two issues that people would show up to fish. There would be rafters or kayakers going by. Lines would be casted in the exact area where they go in the wave shaper feature, but in most cases, we were able to get voluntary compliance. Unfortunately, this year, for whatever reason, that voluntary compliance has actually gone out the window. We had a group of fishermen that became, became, started coming to the island almost daily. They were always casting into the channel where, again, where kayakers and wa, and rafters are coming through. They would remind people that there's no fishing from the island and this group became quite militant and very defiant and they refused to leave. They refused to even remove their hooks if rafters and kayakers were going through the feature. And ultimately, police were called and police realized that this was an island rule for no fishing. It was not an ordinance. So police really had the inability to, to effectively enforce it. We did also call the Department of Natural Resources, the game wardens. They subsequently came in. They cited at least seven different people who were fishing without a license. They did an operation a week later, came back in, they nabbed at least one more, but a bunch of people left when they showed up. So it's safe to say that it's probably an issue that, that they're gonna continue to monitor. But what brought it to a head this year was we have a vendor that does kayak education and training. There was a, a group of about 10 kids, 10 children, taking a kayak lesson on a Friday evening and these fishermen actually ensnared two kids with their lines because of the close proximity. Again, the, the teacher, the instructor of the kayaker asked them to move along. They absolutely refused to do that. The very next day, there were some kayakers in the water and one of the adults literally got hooked by a lure. At that point, Uptown closed the island because we could not guarantee the safety of everybody. And so we then had fishermen that were actually jumping over the fence to go out on the island and fish. Chief Kennedy is here and she can tell you about an experience she had with, with one of these fishers, fishermen as well. So given the uncertainty from an enforcement perspective, the conflicts that we've had through the years, although they've been more voluntarily addressed, but for this year, that just hasn't been the case. We just thought it would be best to bring this forward and seek this official no fishing ban from the island and around the island as well.
This is one of those issues that one part of me says, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna stop people from fishing in that river. My granddaddy fished in that river. We're not gonna stop that. And on the other hand, I say, but we've got to protect our citizens. We've got to protect those folks that are in the river and that are on the island. So I, I appreciate your responses and luckily, I've got a week or two to think a little bit deeper about this and what, what I want to do, but I, I appreciate it and hopefully we can come to a, a solution that will benefit not only people who want to fish in the river, but people who don't want the fishing in that area because of some of the safety concerns that you raised. My granddaddy did fish in that river for years and he didn't wear a protection device, but as the sign now says, you must. But we'll get there. We'll get there. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And if it helps, I did run these numbers. So the Riverwalk is right along the river on the Columbus side is 16.2 miles long. That translates into 84,480 feet. So we're talking about removing 300 feet from that 84,000 total.
Thank you.
Counselor Barnes?
Ed, when I read your email, basically, it boiled down to a safety issue and throwing the, the hooks out. And then secondly, because it's so many altercations. And then thirdly, it seems that CPD is hamstrung because when they, when they call, there's no ordinance to direct them. So it's like a catch-22, so I don't have any problem with this here. Safety, you have to always keep the citizen safe. And then it will also assist the CPD and Public Safety Sheriff's Office as well. So I've been completely supportive this year.
Counselor, Counselor Grab?
Thank you. To your point, Counselor Thomas, I too had some of those concerns, but my husband and I regularly ride our bike up and down the Riverwalk, all the way from the Marina down to the National Infantry Museum. And they actually have little areas that people can fish off of along the river. I see people fishing all along that river. And so to take it away from just this one little part that is very congested with a lot of activity, I, I do feel that it's more for sa, it's, it's, it's better for safety reasons and they can just move to a different place.
Well, and I, not to, pardon the pun, wade into this too deep, but, but I, I will say that, that there has to be something done to give the police department a way to, at least if there's somebody being unruly, to have something to do. However, I also recognize, because I've heard from people that fish out there, and it's, it's not just about being anywhere on the river because in the more turbulent water is where the, I think the striped bass run. And I, I, I don't, I don't know this, I've been told this, but, so it, it is a spot where they have access to, to that fishing. So, you know, we, we, we should be able to figure out some legislative way to let our police department be able to enforce some of those. But at the same time, I mean, they've been coexisting for 10 years. We ought to be able to find a way to try to work it out.
Find some big rocks and create some.
We can, we can do that. Make another wave shaper. All right. That seems to be all the comments.
All right. Let's see if anybody in the audience wants to be heard. Anybody else? Of course, if this passes, it will be an ordinance. Chief Kennedy and her folks will use officer discretion, of course, and it, it will give them some teeth to keep people safe in that area. Well, we'll bring it back in two weeks for a vote, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Wolverton. Mayor, that's all the business items. We have requests for an executive session. Got some folks coming around the 11 o'clock hour for acquisition of real estate and litigation. That's all we have right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move to the public agenda and I'll remind our participants in the public agenda that we've got, you'll have five minutes to be able to get your, your thoughts across the council. And if you cannot complete it in that five minutes, you're welcome to wait to the end of the meeting and come back for an additional three. And we've had, I think I heard from Ms. Elamine that she is not gonna be able to be here. So we'll go to Mr. Rickett Carter, Sr., regarding the racial issues within the black community and freedom of speech. Mr. Carter, if you would start with your name and your address, please, sir.
My name is Rickett Carter. My address is 2113 Seventh Street.
Yes, sir.
In Columbus, Georgia. Okay. I came before this council before to make a new request. And upon me doing that, I didn't get a chance to complete the request and there was no resolve. I was told if I waited, I could have three minutes after the agenda was over with, which I was denied. That I, I never received those three minutes. I sat here for over an hour waiting. I took and left and went out to get my medicine out the truck. When I stepped out the door, you closed the meeting down. I had a man come out and told Mr. Carter, says, your time, come on back in. When I got back in, the meeting had been shut down. I couldn't have been gone no more than two minutes. Seems more or less like the blacks should have, should be extended the rights that the whites are extended in this meeting. I took and, first of all, I'd like to thank our chef department for holding the line because Columbus is in real big trouble. Now, I was told, matter of fact, I was called, when I put in to speak at this meeting, I was called by the clerk of council three times telling me what I couldn't discuss. I couldn't discuss anything about public safety, period. Even though I only made a request for the Georgia GBI's to come into Columbus and try to help out with some of the murders. See, we are having mass murders here in Columbus, but I was told I couldn't speak about that. Some of the things that I may have to say might save some of the citizens' lives here in Columbus. Some of the things that I had to say maybe would have helped save some of your family's lives. The black community, we pay taxes same as the white community and we should be extended the same respect. And now we have some good police officers here in Columbus, Georgia. And in any business is to lead by example. And when you take and abuse that, then it only adds to the problem. We took and came out and voted for you all and trusted what you all promised to do and to protect this city. But look at the results that we're getting now from you all. Why wouldn't, just, why wouldn't you want another agency to come in here and help out with this city? And now with the request I made to you all came to no resolve. I was told that, that someone would be in touch with me about the request that I made. Hadn't heard from anybody. This kind of thing here, controlling information and diverting attention only adds to the I only have five minutes, which I'm gonna abide by the rules and regulations of this chamber, but I will be back at the next council meeting because this thing still hadn't been resolved and it's going, it seems that it's going on deaf ear. My councilman, he's not here today, but he can't do it alone. This council is not made up of one person. Okay.
Mr. Carter, thank you. And you will be allowed three minutes if you want to come back at the end. And first, first let me say that I'm not sure what happened with you not coming back if you weren't in here when you were called or, or if it was an oversight. But I can, I can assure you, and if you look at the tapes, everybody has equal access to that podium and they come back, whether they're white, black, green, doesn't matter. And your time is up, sir. I'm just answering some of the questions. You can come back if you want to at the end of the, of the meeting. And there are, the only thing we ask of people that appear before the, this, this body is that they don't speak about the same incident or, or situation or topic on consecutive, consecutive meetings. And that's, that's, but anything else that you want to say, the free, your freedom of speech is, is protected here. But, but I will tell you that, that I, I don't know why. We'll try to figure out what happened, why you were unable to come back in. You may, you said that they shut the, the meeting. The only time we do that is if there's an executive session. And if there had been a call, I, I don't want to speculate, but you, you have access to your additional three minutes anytime you come up here and are, are unable to finish your thoughts in the five. So you'll have your opportunity to come back at the end of the meeting if you want to take it.
No, sir. I'm not gonna try that again.
All right. I understand.
I medicine, trying it in, and, and you shut the meeting down soon as I walked out that door.
Well, sure. That, I promise you, that wasn't intentional. So we'll, we, we, we will offer you the opportunity, same opportunity we offer every single individual in this community. Counselor Tucker?
Mr. Carter, as I recall, I think you were speaking about your son. Was it the, your son's death in reference to us not having a GBI?
My son was murdered in Columbus, Georgia. And I was requesting that the GBI's come in and do an investigation, which I feel that it was denied due to the fact that it would show the jobs that some people are doing in Columbus. See, and I gotta say, oh, we voted for you all.
I understand.
Going time will come again.
Who, who would, we'd be able to give him to?
We can talk to the police department. The police department would have to request that, that investigation. But we, but I'll make another comment about inviting outside agencies in. We do that all the time. Matter of fact, just this past weekend, we had invited the Georgia State Patrol in to help with, with a crime suppression detail. So we do invite other agencies in, but if there is an active investigation, I, I don't speculate again, but we, we will talk to the police department about it and see the status of this investigation and if it's something they feel they need assistance with.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure you were contacted. I will say, and I know it's unfortunate, but I saw you when you walked out and we really tried to catch you because the meeting, somebody, we sent somebody to run after you. I can't remember who it was that ran after. I can't remember who it was that ran after you, but you walked out like right when the meet, right when we called you up. You was out the door, the door had closed. So it's unfortunate. However, I think we can get somebody to contact you, get your information. I know the clerk has all your information.
Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, Rickett, that's what happened. We had an executive session and the doors were closed. It wasn't anything intentional because this is the first I've seen you and I did not even know what happened to Rick. I didn't know until you came up here. And then I asked somebody about it. And I had all the intentions, because you were sitting there, to ask you to call me. And I wanted to also ask you about Willie, how Willie's doing. But then you didn't come back and I don't have your contact information.
He's dead.
Huh?
Willie is dead. My brother, he's dead.
I didn't even know that.
But the main concern I'm here today for is the safety of the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. The citizens is not aware that they are definitely not safe now.
Mr. Carter, thank you, sir. All right. We'll move to the city manager's agenda. Mr. Hughley?
Mayor, thank you. Let me just say, item D on the purchase agenda is gonna be pulled. I think we've already approved that and it's inadvertently listed on my agenda, item D. But first, I've got a street acceptance, a portion of Barton Drive in Midland Downs. It's...
Motion second to approve item one on the street acceptance. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can you cue it? Counselors, you can enter your votes. And how does Counselor Huff vote? Votes yes? Still missing them?
Yes.
Okay, that passes.
And next, I've got the fiscal year '24 HUD Annual Action Plans Mission. And let me just say that the annual plan, 2023, is a document required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development illustrating how CDBG and home entitlement funding will be expanded for '24 and '23. And so we are scheduled to get 1.6 million in CDBG and home investment, 1,071,000. And so I'm requesting approval to file the action, annual action plans mission to, with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
All right, there's a motion second. Counselor Tucker?
Yes. We received an email from Ms. Teresa Elamine this morning at 6:39 a.m. And she was requesting, and I'm not sure if we have actually did any type of, I guess, like update or meeting to talk about what's in the plan. Have we done that?
I believe Rob Scott has done, why don't you come around? He's done several, I believe.
This is the wishes of Ms. Teresa Elamine. She just wanted to know if it was gonna be some update. I couldn't remember whether or not you had done, you know, some type of plan and maybe she missed that meeting? And if it's available, virtual, where we can share it with her?
Absolutely. We held a public workshop in January. The second public workshop was held on April 4th. There is a draft of the action plan available on the community reinvestment website. So it is publicly available and we have had public sessions to discuss, you know, what we recommend.
Okay. And she did want to let us know that she had an affordable housing justice strategy meeting on May 16 at the Columbus Public Library at 6:00 p.m. And she's definitely inviting you as community reinvestment and the mayor and council. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion second? Hearing none, please cue the votes. We'll let council register their votes. Are we able to? There it goes. All right, Counselor Huff votes yes, so that's approved.
Next, I've got a vote on equipment for Bull Creek Golf Course.
Motion and a second to approve the leased equipment. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll post it so that counselors can register the votes. Counselor Huff votes yes, so that is approved.
Gotcha.
Next, Mayor, council, I've got a request to execute and enter into a contractual agreement with GDOT for the $25 million of T-SPLAS funds in Ban One for various Metro projects.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Counselors, please enter your votes. Counselor Huff votes yes. Counselor Crabbe? You know, we need to try to figure out from a technical... We need to get that fixed. I know it's frustrating to the counselor. All right, but it's approved.
Next, Mayor, I've got a no-match grant for Metra in the amount of $534,367.
Motion and a second to approve the grant. Discussion? Hearing none. Please cue it. Counselors, you can vote. Crabbe and Huff vote yes.
We'll see if we can get that. We'll see if we can get that repaired.
You're probably getting used to it.
Next, I've got a request to submit a grant for $1 million with a 25% cash match, juvenile drug court office of juvenile justice delinquents prevention grant.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion?
Where will the match come from? What funds?
Counselor Crabbe wants to know where the funding will come from for the match.
It's a 25% cash match. Is the finance director here? Want to know where the cash match will come from for the $1 million juvenile justice grant? If they receive the funding.
So each fiscal year, we do budget, including the budget, a certain amount of money to cover the cash matches on most of these grants. And so it'll be covered out of the general fund from the cash match that we have set aside for all grants, so.
Counselor, if you'd hit your button so we can... Counselor Begley?
Do you have the specific name and the budget, the category, so that when we're looking at it for next year, we can make sure we understand it?
I can get you that information.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes. We mentioned something about COVID and how, you know, the illness, but it has actually made people more aware of government function. So we are getting a lot of questions. We apply for a lot of grants. Is there a process or area that we can tell the citizens to look at when we're applying for the grants? And when the grants have been approved? And, you know, just some type of tracking or something where we can show that we applied for, you know, said grants? These are approved and they're in going to whatever department or something. But is there, I know we have it for like T-SPLAS and SPLAS, but all these additional grants, is there something that I can tell citizens that they can look for somewhere?
I mean, not at this time. We don't have like a dashboard that's available on the website or anything, but we do keep track of all that information internally. So I would say at any point, any citizen could reach out to our grants accountant and get that information via open records request.
So it'd be possibly a lot of work to do a dashboard.
Well, I think...
Well, I have all faith in y'all anyway.
I think certainly we can keep a list of grants applied for and then when we receive them. Well, I mean, we can post it.
I think it'd be tough to graph because you've got all these different names, but you could put a list of grants applied for and grants...
We're concerned to do that.
We can work towards that, for sure. Okay. Thank you.
I've got some purchases, Mayor.
Did we take, we didn't take the vote? All right, we did have a motion second, though. All right, so the discussion seems to have been ended. So all in favor, please register your votes for positive. Yes from Counselor Crabbe, yes for Counselor Huff. So that's approved.
So I've got a few purchases.
Yes, sir.
The first one is a soft body armor.
Well, we pulled D. So, all right. So there's a motion and a second to approve items A, B, C, and E from the purchases. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of those items say yes, aye. Any opposed? All right, they're approved. And D, by the way, will come back next week. That's on me. We didn't explain that well enough and in time for the police department is gonna assist them in keeping the officers on the street quicker so that they don't have to wait for some processing.
But A was body armor for police, sheriff, and the prison. And B, milling machine for Public Works Department when they're out there working the roads. And C was a bulldozer repair. E was modernization of the computer fleet for information technology. And F was just some off-the-lot purchases that we were able to make for difficult-to-purchase vehicles. And so they were considered emergency purchases that we could get them off the lot. For example, we had vehicles for engineering department for fire EMS, codes enforcement, Public Works, Homeland Security, and another one for fire EMS and several for fire EMS, Public Works, and Public Works Department.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, this is designated as an emergency purchase. And I know that the list you just read, we typically approve vehicles for all of those departments. Is this emergency because if we don't buy it today, it'll be gone?
Well, it's an emergency, yes, because the backlog supply is a challenge. And other communities are purchasing off the lot where they can get there first. And when we get an opportunity to get these vehicles rather than waiting a year, 18 months, you know, we try and go and get them. And of course, you know, price is important. We know generally what we would be paying for those vehicles. And so we want to make sure that vendors are competitive.
I guess my thought was, if it's, because if we don't approve it today, the next time we have a council meeting on the 25th, that vehicle will be gone.
It would not be on that lot, in all likelihood.
Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we're doing, and I know that we have told you that this is a practice that we're okay with, to buy off the lot if it is that situation. But we will still have others. There's a question mark at the end of this. Other vehicle purchases that will come through the regular process?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And when times get back normal, obviously, we'll use our, you know, our process.
Now, Mr. City Manager, I have a book, the title of that book is "Normal is Just a Setting on the Dryer." So it may not get back to normal.
Yeah, you're right about that. You're exactly right. So I do have some updates. And the first one I will call on was, is an update on Interstate 14 by Frank Lumpkin. And Frank Lumpkin is not a stranger to this council. And this is a project that former councillor John House continued to work on and wanted to see come to fruition. And it's something that Frank Lumpkin has been working on for years. And I wanted him to come and give an update on Interstate 14. If you would come to the podium, Mr. Lumpkin. Thank you for being here. And floor is yours.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Hughley, for having me today. I greatly appreciate it and excited to share, you know, the updates on Interstate 14 with y'all today. It's amazing. It was six years ago when I first briefed this council. There's a lot of new faces here today. And, but the fervor hasn't changed. I'm still extremely interested in this community. I was in high school then. I'm now one day away from graduating from law school at the University of Georgia. So it's pretty exciting to have continued this project through and to be back to share all the progress that has taken place, both by our organization and just in the natural events and natural course of our government that have actually made Interstate 14 more a possibility now than ever before. So I hope this works. Perfect. So I'll start out by saying that, you know, I-14 started as a grassroots initiative. In fact, Walker Garrett, who's not here today, drafted our first, you know, I-14 Resolution of Support, which now we have a resolution of support from every local municipality on the route. Very exciting. This project has authorization. So grassroots to a project with national recognition. Ideas have become meaningful legislation. Just two years ago, the U.S. Congress passed a bill that was signed by the president to authorize Interstate 14's development to and through Georgia. Senator Warnock and Senator Ted Cruz came together as an unlikely pairing to make that happen. And concepts have become reality. Interstate 14 exists very much in Texas. I was driving on it only two weeks ago and got to meet the people who brought it together, who have set some impressive precedent that we'll be able to follow in order to make Interstate 14 a reality for this community. So without further ado, why Interstate 14? I'm gonna let this video explain it. It's come to my attention from the city manager that many of you hadn't seen the I-14 video. So if you have, I apologize. But we're gonna take the time to watch it because the video explains it a lot better than I could within my allocated time up here.
Interstate 14 is a proposed highway along Interstate 10 in West Texas to Interstate 20 in Augusta, Georgia. Whether you are young or old, if you live within 100 miles of the proposed route, completing or abandoning this highway project will impact your future. This highway is crucial and your support can guarantee its completion. Why should you care about Interstate 14? First and foremost, as a taxpayer, you have already paid for the preliminary work. In 2010, the Secretary of Transportation had the Federal Highway Administration conduct a study outlining route alternatives from Natchez to Augusta. And the report was presented to Congress. This action alone saves years of preliminary work and more millions of dollars in upfront cost. But it is money and time wasted if the highway is never finished. Second, you have already paid for much of the physical work. Virtually no part of the Interstate 14 route involves condemning land and constructing an entirely new section of road. Much of the infrastructure is there, though most segments will require modification to meet interstate standards. And in the larger cities along the route, limited-access highways built to interstate standards already exist and need only minor modifications. So we're not so much building a new highway as we're taking what's already there, upgrading it, and connecting it to other roads. There will be little disruption within existing communities. There will be little disruption within existing communities and minimal eminent domain land acquisition costs. Third, the gateway to economic prosperity is lined with concrete and asphalt. Interstate fourteen provides east-west interstate connection to an area that lacks it. It will bring economic prosperity to an impoverished region. Areas shown in red suffer persistent poverty. As you can see, almost all of the Interstate fourteen route passes through impoverished places. The median household income within the I fourteen study area is thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, approximately twenty-two percent below the national median household income. Economic prosperity comes from trade. And Interstate fourteen is about connecting places. It will connect forts, it will connect ports, it will connect major cities. It will intersect twelve other interstate highways and a multitude of secondary routes. A robust transportation network that'll improve access and destination traffic that will stop as needed for hotels, fast food, gas, et cetera, as well as local attractions like museums, theaters, and historic sites. All of these businesses and more will benefit directly from the increased volume of consumers. Because it's cheaper to ship products along interstates, warehousing and manufacturing firms seek locations connected to the grid. This interstate will attract these sorts of businesses to the areas surrounding I fourteen. And businesses already on the route can more easily expand their operations as they reap the benefits of enhanced connectivity. And the connectivity will benefit agriculture. Agricultural businesses will be able to get perishables to markets more rapidly. And migrant farm workers will be able to travel more easily from farm to farm during harvests, increasing productivity. Lastly, the building and maintenance of I fourteen will provide jobs for local construction companies all along the route. In every way, local economies prosper, and that means you prosper. From a national security perspective, the more options we have for rapid deployment, the better. Interstate fourteen will be a major link connecting southern military installations to one another and to ports, hence its nickname, the Forts to Ports Highway. Also, Interstate fourteen will enhance training because units can be transported within hours from one major base to another to train at different facilities and in different environments. I fourteen is a means to solving many of the issues the South is facing today. Those not even on the route will also benefit. I fourteen would alleviate some of the congestion on currently existing interstates. Right now, east-west travel in the South is primarily along I ten and I twenty, causing major congestion in cities along these routes. I fourteen will provide an alternative route for leaving these cities from some congestion. President Kennedy stated, "American roads are not good because America is rich, but America is rich because American roads are good." This is the idea that I fourteen encompasses. Tell your friends about it. Tell your local representatives about it. And tell your state and national representatives that you want this road built. Every place on the I fourteen route has nothing to lose but so much to gain. This will be your interstate. Together, let's make I fourteen a reality. The future of our region depends on it.
Those words couldn't be true. The future of our region depends on it. Uh, now I'm going to specifically talk about Interstate fourteen Columbus as that macroscopically explained the, the concept. Um, and it, it breaks down into three major reasons, and that's interstate connection, enhanced economic development, strategic military impact. Um, at one time it was the, the river, at one time it was the railroads, um, but now we're connected by airports and highways. Uh, we lack that vital connection to the rest of, um, the, the national interstate system. And it, it impacts businesses right here in Columbus. Um, I spoke to a business owner out, um, in the technology part. And they just talked about how, uh, each, um, influx of, uh, of materials to, to create their product cost micro cents, but, but cents nonetheless that in the aggregate add up to dollars and dollars and dollars. It may get unfeasible to do business in this region. And we're missing out on the Amazons, we're missing out on the Kia plants. Being right here in Columbus, they pick regions like Auburn, they pick La Grange because of that. And that translates directly into jobs. So you see Site Selection, um, magazine here highlights how some interstates or how businesses have chosen, um, sites next to interstates and how those have directly led to jobs. Um, you even go to Georgia's Site Selection website, and, uh, their sixth and seventh criteria are distance to interstate and, uh, distance to major highways. Unfortunately, when businesses look at Georgia, they're not looking at Columbus because of this. And like I was about to say, that translates into jobs, that translates into the prosperity of our people here. Um, we want to provide jobs not only at, you know, corporations like Aflac, TSIS, Synovus, um, and then of course with the military, we need to provide good paying jobs that, you know, you can have a technical degree for, um, and then be employed there and make a meaningful living. We are missing that, that gap. Um, or we have, there's a huge gap, um, where people do not have those, those sorts of jobs that, um, you know, fill in that area and, and that's leading to, um, you know, persistent poverty. Uh, the, the, the video talked about how, um, you know, the, these marginalized places, um, are disconnected from the interstate. And, and there's an absolute link between the lack of connection and the lack of, um, economic opportunities through jobs. And then of course strategic military impact, um, you know, that is the largest employer by far, Fort Benning, Fort Moore, whatever you want to call it. Um, regardless of the name, um, Moore will have an impact on this community going forward, and we want to make sure and keep them here. There is only one deployable unit at Fort Benning, and there is a reason for that. Well, there's two reasons. Number one, it's a trade-out community, uh, community where there, there's a lot of training, um, at the base. But number two, because we don't have a direct link with any of the deployable ports on the coast, because of that, they're not going to put any units that have lots of, um, you know, uh, equipment that needs to be shipped in, in a time of war. Uh, that makes us vulnerable in a brachary alignment situation to having even, you know, our, our one deployable, um, unit stripped of us, or perhaps other, um, aspects of the base that we rely so, um, heavily on to influence this community. So, uh, moving forward for why I fourteen makes sense, and I think everybody understands that, this is a very pragmatic group. I've, I've talked to each of these, uh, counselors at one time or another about I fourteen. But who supports I fourteen? Well, I'll go ahead and say it, it ranges far outside of Columbus. Uh, we have, as I mentioned earlier, um, this city council along with every city council and county commission along the entire route. Um, we have the local MPO as well as all the other POs on the route. That was a requirement to get the bill passed through Congress. Uh, we have the state government, we have the Georgia Department of Transportation. We have US Congress, of course, and, um, like I said, our surrounding governments. So where are we with the project? And this, um, is I think really where, where you all are most interested, most likely. Um, so we have congressional approval of a hundred percent of the routes. That, that's very exciting. Um, that's a huge step from where we were six years ago when, um, you know, I fourteen was not anything on anybody's minds. And what's amazing is you'll look at this, uh, pie chart on the right, um, of the, the areas on the entire route. So this is all the way from Odessa, Texas to Augusta, Georgia. Um, of what needs little improvement, what needs no improvement, because a lot of Interstate fourteen uses pre-existing interstate or highways that are already, um, built to standards. Um, and then, you know, as you can only, as you see, five or only three percent of the entire route actually needs major improvement. That's constructing entirely new segment of roadway or converting, um, a two-lane road to a four-lane. Uh, if we look at Georgia, um, the numbers vary, um, positively and negatively, um, I, I would say. Um, eighty percent of the road needs little improvement. What that means is there's four-lane divided highway, um, there currently. That doesn't mean there doesn't, it won't be any eminent domain cost. Um, that doesn't mean there won't be any, um, you know, we'll have to, uh, construction that has to be done on this road. In fact, there will be, um, quite a lot. I don't want to downplay that. Um, but if you look just quite fortuitously, we are so far ahead of any other state because of decisions of our state government and our local communities to allow this highway to be able to come through here. Let's talk about Columbus specifically. Um, and, and the J R Allen Parkway would be the most obvious, um, route. And that is what the current legislation says where Interstate fourteen will come through Columbus in some form or fashion. From the, uh, two-eighty, um, section over in Alabama, all the way till about the end of Blackman Road. Um, what I want to say here is that, uh, we, the Federal Highways Administration has said that this segment is built to interstate standards. Our city government has done a study on that and has found that not to be true based on the current interstate standards. There's disagreement, there's some ambiguity here. However, my, um, thi- this is Interstate fourteen out in Texas. Um, it's, it's a very similar community. It's a very similar roadway, um, to that of the J R Allen Parkway. And I, what I'm going to propose, um, at the end of this presentation is that we follow their model in order to open our segment of Interstate fourteen. Um, this is my, uh, my friend and I who, who works with me on the I fourteen project with the commissioner or the director of the Department of Transportation out in Texas, as well as with the planning director for the department. We have incredible precedent. Like any winning court case, you want to have strong precedent. And we have it with Texas and with that Federal Highways Administration study. Um, what the director said verbatim to us was when I fourteen Texas opened, not all interstate standards were met to a T. The Federal Highways Administration allows some leeway on these designated routes. That's new information that I have as of two weeks ago. So this, this, the timing of this couldn't have been more perfect. Now, we have a study, again, that says the J R Allen Parkway does not meet interstate standards to a T. However, what we know because of not only I fourteen in Texas, but three other interstate designations that they have made is that you do not need to meet that. Texas has rolled out the red carpet for us and is willing to help. The Department of, um, of, uh, Transportation Director here has, um, been, has reached out to, uh, both the Alabama, um, Commissioner, as well as, uh, Russell McMurray, the Georgia Department of Transportation Commissioner, and is offering their assistance, helping us to open I fourteen starting here in Columbus along the J R Allen Parkway route. Now, so how do we get there? So this is in a least complex way as I can present it, the way an interstate, um, i- i- is, is built. Um, and really the, the, you follow two directions. You either have road that's already built interstate standards or very close to it. Um, you know, and then the, the Federal Highways Administration will coordinate with the Department of Transportation and determine whether that interstate meets the correct standards, um, in order to be opened as interstate. If it isn't, of course, the improvements need to be made, and then you go through the process again. Um, the, the funding, I'm not going to get into that because that's really not the topic. I'm not, I'm not asking for money. Um, most of the money though, just so you know, and in short, will come from, from the state government. That matriculates from the federal government, but it has to be come from GDOT's authorization. Although there is room for money to be requested in, in grants, um, from, uh, the, the federal government. And then local funds can be used, but as you see, the arrows are smaller coming from those because it will come from the state in bold. Um, but our action steps, uh, that, that, that we're going to use going forward in order to make this happen, um, is send the Georgia Department of Transportation a letter requesting that they petition the Federal Highways Administration to open I fourteen in Columbus. And that's something I've already coordinated with the city manager, assistant city manager, um, about. And it's, it's very doable. This is again, following the prescription that Texas used in order to open their segment. Just want to make sure I'm not missing anything. I, I, I don't want to give the false impression that J R Allen Parkway is, is going to be, uh, you know, Interstate fourteen ready, um, when it gets up to the Federal Highways Administration. I'm not, I'm almost a lawyer. I'm definitely not an engineer. Um, I've read the code. Yes, it does not meet, um, the, the guidance to a T. But you shou- I, I have a letter, um, right here, uh, where they, um, Killeen, Texas, got their approval from the Trans, Department of Transportation. Um, I have the letter from Federal Highways that gave them that authorization. And I have the ninety-three, um, page technical study from the, uh, Texas Department of Transportation that they submitted to Federal Highways to have it open. And in reading through that study, they were not even close to some of the standards. And yet they were still able to open it. Um, in, in fact, what I was told by, uh, by members of, of the Texas Department of Transportation is that, um, most interstates that you drive on today do not meet that standard. Um, the standards have gone up in time. And really, the only time you have to meet it to a T is when, um, you're, you do not have the congressional authorization and it's, does not fit a part of this nexus of the interstate system that I fourteen does now because of the, uh, the bill. Um, the other, um, piece of this is to begin looking at expanding, um, you know, I fourteen to the other areas. Of course, um, one of our problems is, is what happens after J R Allen Parkway. Thankfully, the, uh, the legislation we passed, we were, um, we kept that in mind. And we used words to, to hedge the exact routing of the, um, the future, uh, roadway in order to allow flexibility for areas, um, you know, like the area west of or east of Columbus, like, you know, towns that need to be bypassed along the falling freeway in Georgia. Um, I guess the last piece of this would be, um, also that, that planning, uh, submit CDS requests to all of our congressional delegation. Um, Warnock is a vocal supporter of I fourteen, as is also Sanford Bishop, Andrew Ferguson. Uh, they should be willing to, to commit these funds. Um, I, I was meeting with Warnock's office last week, and they're very much committed to this project. It's something that he ran on and, uh, and, and in hopes to, uh, you know, be a part of and definitely wants his, his name on. So we need to use that, and, uh, I fourteen, I believe, will start with this community. I gave my first presentation here. The grassroots movement for I fourteen started here. And, uh, I believe that we need to have that first segment of Interstate fourteen. And while it's a huge project, this is relatively low-hanging fruit in terms of economic development for our region. So, uh, I will turn it over to the city manager if he has any comments. Um, but I think, uh, getting that letter out will be our first step. So, thank you.
So, um, so you would at some point today, uh, two weeks from now, at some point, want a letter of, uh, from, um, from this body?
That's correct. So if you turn to the last two pages of the packet that I provided, um, I have drafted up a letter, at least what, what one would look like. That's, uh, in, again, entirely plagiarizing, um, what was done in Texas. And, uh, following their exact prescription, um, of, of how they were able to open up Interstate fourteen. That will come from the Columbus. See, that the petition to the Federal Highways Administration has to come from the Department of Transportation. But if Columbus wants this, um, they need to be the, the body asking the Department of Transportation to open this, uh, segment up. And, you know, I, I want to be realistic here too. I mean, Interstate fourteen is not going to open overnight, even a small segment of it. All, all we're trying to do is open up a very small piece. If, if the Federal Highways Administration is only able to, to find that one mile of J R Allen Parkway meets interstate standards, I want to get signs on that because what that will start doing is, is showing that Interstate fourteen is coming here. It will make the Department of Transportation wish to connect the dots between here and Texas, and the route development will absolutely accelerate. That's why Texas has a vested interest in opening up I fourteen Columbus. That is why, and, and, and from my, um, trip out to Killeen, Texas, where I got to drive on Interstate fourteen, um, I learned from the folks there that, yeah, well, we only have twenty-five miles of it open. Um, the, like, businesses have already begun investing because they see that, that there's about to be a much larger route. because they see that there's about to be a much larger route, get in early while the land's cheap and, you know, and then begin, you know, your operations and expand them as the route gets expanded.
So Mayor and Council, here's what I think I'm going to do. I'm going to ask staff to come back at the next meeting with a short presentation that would share with you what our perspective on Interstate 14. In other words, are there pros, are there cons to Interstate 14 in terms of how it might impact the areas it would come through and the people in the area? And then, any cost that the government, this local government would have to incur if we commit to letter moving forward and the approval comes? And then what a, the letter, and maybe you can share with me sample letters from Texas or wherever, what a letter to Georgia DOT might look like? And then you can decide whether it's something, a letter that you want to move forward with, whether it's something that you want to pursue at this time. And, but I, I know that there is going to be some local costs, I believe, that the city manager, and you need to know what that cost might be. And, you know, I, I don't know how the council member in the district or districts feel, the citywide counselors in Interstate. I know when we've attempted rezonings in certain areas, there's been a reaction. I don't want a gas station there that's going to bring more people. And so, but as best we can, the pros, the cons, the cost, and what a sample letter might look like is what I'd like to bring back and share with you. Any questions of Mr. Lumpkin or what I intend to do in coming back to you to determine whether the letter moves forward?
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Okay, I just want to clarify, clarification. We have already voted on an ordinance that we support the I-14 project and we want to see it move forward. Is that correct?
Resolution.
Yeah, that's correct.
And so, isn't that pretty much committing us to that, to this project? And so, we would want to move forward with a letter. I do want to see the breakdown in the, I mean, I think we know some of the pros and cons already. I think we knew it when we did that resolution. And I'd like to see the, I'd like to see what the local buy-in to this project is. But as, you know, I think we should do whatever we need to do in order to move this forward because we keep on talking about the poverty rate here in Columbus. And I don't think that, I think this is a key element to reducing the poverty rate here in Columbus, Georgia.
Yeah, and, and we did, this council did do the, the resolution in support. And, and I want to be clear, I like the I-14. We missed out on 85, and I think we should explore. But I just want to make sure that we do so with our eyes open in terms of any cost and whether it's going to take away from something else. If you, I, I just want to put everything on the table. But I like and support personally the I-14, but.
Well, and I think the, I think the resolutions were urging continued research and continued dialogue so that we could have an opportunity to engage in that corridor. For me, I think it's a generational deal. To say it's not happening overnight is probably a little old, a bit of an understatement. It's going to take quite a while. But every day that we wait to try to push this a little bit farther down the road, it's, it's costing us months.
Yes.
And, but I do think you have to look at the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. Because if you take I-14, you're going to go through the Panhandle area. So you'd have to be creative there, that's going to cost more money. But I like the idea of seeing if any of the things that we can identify match up with what they turned in in Texas and get even just a short section designated. That at least makes a visible reminder and sort of an avowment that this is something we're, we're going to continue to try to pursue. Counselor Begley?
So I understand the letter is specifically for JR Allen Parkway to say this is.
Exactly. I'm not talking about any other part of the segment. And that's something I want to make clear, that the legislation, again, allows lots of leeway for the local community to get it right. We don't want to repeat the mistakes of the past where these interstates went through, especially the marginalized neighborhoods and communities, and tore communities apart. We drafted the legislation in a way to ensure that wouldn't happen. The voices of the folks on the Panhandle, you know, in the Midland area, will be heard. And that, that's, I'm not asking that we, we, we're trying to do anything with that part of the route right now. We want to open up the segment that is already, is as close to standards as possible, the low-hanging fruit. In my opinion, that's probably one of the last sections of Interstate 14 that will be done because, most likely, because of the development that is already out there, a, some sort of bypass will have to be constructed. And that's, that's an entirely different topic, you know. And that's, that's why we have that 14% on the pie graph that you saw, areas that will need, you know, bypasses. That, that would be one of those areas. And then the other part I wanted to mention to touch on some of the, the city manager's concerns is that by submitting this letter, th, this won't tie us to anything. This isn't any commitment. We're just asking GDOT to, to ask the Federal Highways Administration to basically come down, do their test on the JR Allen Parkway, and determine, does this meet that criteria? And there's a lot of push, there's a lot of back and forth of which we can implore GDOT to argue that it should be opened, even if it doesn't meet those standards to a T. You know, if they come over and, and say, no, it doesn't meet standards, and, you know, you have to do this, that falls on GDOT, not the city of Columbus. And again, that's just this, like, they say, if you want Interstate 14, you have to do this. That would be an entire, like, another, you know, time that we could make the decision of whether we want to put the money going forward. This is simply asking them to come down and, and do the studies. So I don't want that to be, you know, confused with we, the city is going to spend all the money to bring Interstate 14 up to standards. That's the furthest thing from what's going to happen. It will be state dollars that do this. And it's just, I think we're, we're not even going to have to put that money forward because of that precedent we have in Texas. We're not going to have to meet those standards to a T, so. That's clear to us.
So, so Ms. Mayor.
Couple more questions we've got, I'm sorry. Counselor Thomas?
I, I assume, and I know there's danger in doing that, that the newest member of the GDOT board, who is from Columbus, Ms. Kathy Williams, is in support of this?
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think that we, we need to do whatever we can to keep that support and to build the support of, of our local delegation because they will be asked at some point in time to approve all of this. So as the, the staff, Mr. City Manager, looks into that, if, if that kind of, if, if the, if they could give us the position of either individual members of our delegation or the entire delegation on this, I, I just can't imagine any of them would be opposed. But I want to make sure that they understand that we, as a city council, like this idea and approve this idea and want this to go forward.
Sure.
If, if you could bring that back in your report back to us, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comment, Counselor Thomas. I just want to touch on that, that's definitely why we have the, the entire state delegation carbon copied at the top, as well as Kathy Williams and Dennis McIntyre. We have, my organization has met with all of them in some form or fashion. Back in 2018, the delegation, you know, passed the I-14 bill through the House of Representatives, that, through the House by Representative Smith, Richard Smith, and then Ed Harbison carried us through the Senate. And we have the support from the state in that fashion. I've also, again, met with Kathy Williams and briefed her on this. And she is going to do anything she can to help ensure that this letter is seen by the commissioner and is, is directed to the proper departments within GDOT. So I don't think you're going to have any problem with the delegation. If you do, let me know and I'll personally reach out. I, I was having lunch with Vance Smith the other day. And with his experience, you know, as the former GDOT Commissioner, we, we've discussed this and he supports it thoroughly as, as well as all of the other members that I've spoken to.
Okay, we've got a few other counselors that want to speak. Counselor Davis?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Lumpkin, thanks for coming today. And I don't know if congratulations is in order or best wishes, but I know you're about to finish your graduate work. Hopefully, congratulations. I don't doubt the way you put on this presentation, that, that's not going to be an issue. But you've, you've done a lot of work over the past many years that I've seen you. You know, I've watched you grow and then hear you're at this point. I really appreciate your persistence. But let me, I'm going to ask you a technical question, okay? And I know the younger generation's into all that stuff. But, you know, ways, there's other means and things like that. Have you done any research on that to find out just the time, the routes, and saving time? I mean, what I-14 would, would add up to for those now that are heading in that direction, that could possibly take another route? What kind of time you'd save?
Absolutely. I, I don't know the, the exact figures.
And you, you don't have to do it today. I mean, you, you know, but I didn't see any of that in your, in your film or your presentation. But I just was curious.
Right, so, you know, primarily, traffic that's, that goes east-west has to take I-10 and I-20 through the, the southeast, particularly truck traffic from the Port of Savannah. I-14 would, you know, take a massive portion, you know, 10 to 20% of those, those trucks and just travelers off the roads going through the bottleneck of Atlanta. And they would be coming, you know, via I-14 instead, spending money here and, you know, seeing what our community has to offer. For travelers, I mean, thinking of where they're come, that could save anywhere from, you know, 30 minutes to, to hours. I don't have the exact number, but I, I can make some estimates after driving the, the route plenty of times and sitting in traffic in Atlanta, so.
Great. Ms. City Manager, and along the same lines as your conversation earlier, we've been doing a tremendous, in the last three years or so, we've been doing a lot of, a tremendous amount of work on, on the bypass. So I mean, there should be a lot of stuff on record by now of the amount of work that's been done that could help and save time or possibly contribute to what Mr. Lumpkin is, is requesting or talking about. So that's, you know, like I said, a tremendous amount of work in the last three years.
Sure.
All right, Counselor Crabbe?
I'm just wondering, since this letter is not committing us to anything, what's wrong with just approving that we send out the letter now and then they can come back to us with the pros and cons and the financing and, and all of that? Just to keep the ball rolling and moving forward? What is everybody's thoughts on that?
Well, I don't think it would, like, we could, we could do that certainly and do like we did with the previous one, which is approve the concept of having them evaluate whether or not it meets the standards. But I, you know, it might be cleaner and easier for council to have all the information that comes from being able to look at the Texas, the scope of work that they did in putting that, that, their, their evidence together. We don't have to recreate the wheel. And we'd be able to look and see if we already have some components that match what they've already done, which would make it much, we could cite when we send the letter to make it as, as same as that. Whatever council wants to do, I think it'll get, we need to do it. It just depends on when, when we need to send it.
Did, did they have, when Texas did the letter, did they have the supporting evidence with it?
Well, you got to remember, the, the letter came from the Department of Transportation and went to the Federal Highways Administration, so absolutely. But that's, that's out of the city's wheelhouse. We don't have the, the resources and personnel to create the technical report that's required to go to the Federal Highways Administration. All, all the letter, I'm asking, is basically get the ball rolling on that. We're going to request that GDOT petition the Federal Highways Administration along with a, a accompanying technical report. And that's just black-letter law. That's, that's just what has to be done when you try to open a new and designate a section of highway. And, and so, I mean, I, I think your suggestion is, is great. Happy to, you know, I'll definitely defer to all of you on, on suggestion there. But this, this is not committing the city of Columbus to anything other than sending a letter to GDOT, asking them to send another letter as well as a technical report analysis to the, the Federal Highways Administration.
And I'd like to make the motion that we send the letter as, you know, as soon as possible.
Okay, there's the motion, we got a few other comments. One is the city attorney.
It's fine if you want to do an oral resolution today or in two weeks. You can get the data, whatever city manager wants to pull together in the next two weeks. And then you can pass an oral resolution in two weeks and the letter can be ready to go at that time from the.
The letter could be in their hands before we, bef, before we even convene again. If they, if we approved it today, the letter could be sent out and it could be in their hands, they could be reading it.
That's, that's your call, the template is here, so.
All right, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Allen?
Well, I appreciate the, the interest in expediting, but I, I understand the urgency, but I see no urgency in not waiting two more weeks. As a counselor whose district part of this road will go through, I, I think it would, I have heard some concerns expressed to me. So I think it would behoove council to hear the information that's brought back from the city manager. It's not going to hurt us to wait two more weeks. DOT is not going to move any faster if they get it in the next couple of days or in two more weeks. So I, I would urge council to wait until we hear the, the data that is brought back to us. Can you, can I ask one more question, Ms. Lumpkin? When, when the roadway, what, the plan for the roadway, when it goes through JR Allen Parkway, then out Beaver Run, Highway 80, will it connect with 75 or cross 75, or does it go straight to Macon? Is there any idea for it to turn northward? It seems like there's a northward arc in it. What, do you know any specifics on that?
Well, I mean, I, I know what the legislation says, which I have right here. And, you know, currently, it follows the fall line freeway generally.
Okay.
And so, the fall line freeway, as it currently stands, from Byron hops on 75, 16, and it goes out Highway 80, that's where that northern arc, you know, comes in.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
However, I've heard plans of, you know, Macon, creating a, a south bypass of which, again, the legislation allows flexibility for the local communities to do what's best for them. And I've heard interest in, in using that south bypass, Macon, just.
So, Ms. Mayor, again, I, I think this is a, a great project. But I, I thought this discussion, the video shared today will be able to, will rebroadcast this meeting three times a day for the next two weeks. And, and people in that area, Mayor Pro Tim, through your district, will get to watch this council meeting, maybe hear some news coverage. maybe hear some news coverage and react to you and other members around this table, especially the citywide councillors. You know, it, it gives them a chance to react to if an interstate comes through that area. I don't know what their reaction will be, but then it gives us a chance to really look at Colleen, Texas and see if any local dollars, uh, were spent. And, and if our situation is similar in any way that would require local dollars and if local dollars, where those dollars might come from and how that might impact other projects throughout the community if we spent those dollars there. But I do, I'm with Interstate fourteen. I just, there's some due diligence. I, I want to make you, I, I don't want to put you in a position that everybody says yes and then you hear the outcry over the next two weeks and realize that we pulled the trigger too soon, you know? So, that, that was my approach.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Well, I just, I, I, there's an old expression of getting out in front of your skis and I just want to make sure we do it right. And I'm sure Mr. Lumpkin does as well. Just, we just need to take our time and methodically move through this. And I think citizens will appreciate that. If it looks like we're rubber stamping something, we're going to get heavily criticized. And, and I, I just want us to take our time. So, all I'm asking.
So, so we'll, we'll be back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Lumpkin?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You started in high school and now you're about to graduate, graduate law school, college and then law school.
He was advisory council?
Yeah, he, he was on the youth advisory council. You were on, he started on the youth advisory council. And I think you were talking about Interstate fourteen then.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
On the youth advisory council. And, uh, yeah, so, awesome. We appreciate you.
Well, Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Frank.
Um, Mayor, uh, last week, we had some reports that came out late. The, um, Animal Care Center, uh, audit findings, um, staffing issues, and then Integrated Waste Update. Um, and, and so we've got Director Drell Short here and she, I've got her listed for three updates. And she can just roll them, one, two, three. And, uh, but we wanted, um, to share those things with you today.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Mayor, the rest of the council. Good morning to you all. Actually, we're going to roll, uh, two of them into one. That's the animal control. We'll discuss the audit findings as well as give you an update on animal control and where we are. But we're going to start the day by, um, talking about integrated waste because that is a very important, um, uh, area for us. It's a service that we provide to our entire city. And I've got the Integrated Waste Manager, Mr. John Pittman here, who is going to give a presentation on where we are right now in integrated waste, where we want to go in the future, and also on how we need to deal with AMWaste. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good morning.
Morning.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, thank you for allowing me to be before you this, this morning to present our Integrated Waste Proposal. Our agenda, our Integrated Waste Presentation Agenda, the current state of the Integrated Waste.
Thank you.
Uh, Integrated Waste, we have two options for transition, option one and option two that we'll be, uh, presenting to you. Uh, we're going to give you an overview of just the operational costs for Integrated Waste. And we're going to give you, uh, the Finance Director is going to give you an, an operational and phase out of, uh, AMWaste. Uh, the future of Integrated Waste Collections, we're going to give you a little short overview of that. And then, uh, the transition from, uh, with, uh, automated side loaders yard waste collections after the transition. That's what it would look like. And then at the end, we have some recommendations that we would like to present to you. Our current state right now, uh, we currently, uh, have, uh, twenty-six garbage routes that we are, uh, uh, posting out, uh, on a daily basis. Uh, we have about six hundred and fifty homes that we collect for each vehicle. Um, and during that process, uh, we need inmates currently right now. We, uh, need sixty, uh, inmates on, on a daily basis for household garbage and, and recycling. Uh, right now, we're getting about, average of about sixty we receive, fifty-two, excuse me, fifty-two that we receive on a daily basis now. Uh, we currently have fifty-six CDL operators right now. Uh, we got eight spare operators and we have, uh, five vacancies right now that we are actively trying to fill as we speak. Uh, on our on-call service, we have ten gravel operators, uh, vehicles that we put out on a daily basis. We have twelve recycling routes, uh, with eight automated side loaders that we put out and four rail loaders. Uh, since COVID, uh, we had to add four, uh, rail loaders in order to be able to service the, uh, recycling routes. Uh, we got a daily total of forty-eight routes that we put out on a daily basis, uh, to serve the, uh, uh, citizens of Columbus. Uh, that's what we currently looking at right now. That's how we look on a daily basis right now. Uh, option one that we have in place, continue to do what we're doing now. Uh, uh, we have forty-eight routes, not including, um, container ra- uh, yard waste, which is AMWaste. Uh, we ask that, uh, to continue to fund AMWaste through, uh, December of twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's, uh, something that we need. Uh, we know it's not sustainable, but that will allow us time to make that transition, uh, to phase out, uh, the, uh, yard waste, the, the automated routes until the, uh, rail loaders phase that out. That will give us that time. We would need a minimum of five ASLs expected to be delivered in the month of July. That's, that's what we're expecting right now in order to be successful. Uh, the new side loaders come in, they will be assigned to household garbage. Um, household rail loader garbage, the rail loaders, they will be diverted to the, uh, yard waste program. We'll be preparing, uh, to, uh, collect, uh, to bring the yard waste back into in-house. This increase in the, uh, ASLs and the diversion of the rail loader yard waste will allow us to continue to provide that current service level that, where we're at now. Option two, phase out AMWaste by September of twenty twenty-three. This is a ninety-day plan. Uh, the first phase out will begin, uh, in July. Uh, it would impact twenty-one thousand five hundred customers. Phase two, August, uh, uh, impact another, uh, twenty-one thousand customers. That's five routes on each month, uh, five month routes that we will, uh, transition out the rail loader and implement the automated side loaders. And the final phase out, uh, we have four rail loaders that we will be phased out. And that will be the last of the phase out, the, the seventeen thousand customers that we have. Um, and that will complete the phase out, you know, within ninety days, uh, assuming we receive the ASLs by July. This option is unstable because we cannot guarantee enough trucks on time to collect what AMWaste is currently collecting. This option is not a favorable option. Uh, operational cost savings. The cost to operate a rail loader refuse truck is about two-point-five million dollars on an annual base, and that's twenty-six, uh, rail loaders that we have. The cost to operate sixteen automated side loaders is about one-point-seven million dollars. Uh, with the integration of the ASLs, we'll be putting out sixteen ASLs versus twenty-six rail loaders. Uh, there's an estimated cost savings there of about seven-hundred-and-forty-three thousand. Uh, it costs, uh, a little bit more to operate, uh, ASL, but we're putting out less vehicles, so. Uh, AMWaste operational costs to date, uh, the Finance Director is going to take it from here.
So, um, just, um, recap in terms of the, um, cost to date that we've paid to AMWaste. Um, the AMWaste, uh, began services for us on June twenty-first of twenty twenty-one. Um, the initial agreement with AMWaste was to cover five routes. And they, uh, the cost for, uh, each route per month was twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Um, that was short-lived in terms of the initial five routes because we asked them to pick up another five routes, um, um, in August of twenty twenty-one. And so, from August twenty twenty-one to July twenty-two, um, they, uh, AMWaste provided services for us for ten routes, um, still at the same price per route of twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Um, and then we amended the agreement again with, um, AMWaste. Uh, this was August of twenty, uh, two, in which, um, we asked them to pick up all routes. So, all fourteen routes, um, they did increase the, the cost, um, to that in order to provide that service. Um, it went up to thirty-one thousand four hundred dollars per route per month. Um, they also, um, included in, in part of that agreement, uh, fuel surcharges. Um, so the amount that we've paid to AMWaste to date is, uh, just over seven-point-seven million dollars. Um, that number does include the fuel surcharges of, uh, two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars that we've paid out to them. Um, and basically, in terms of the fuel surcharges, if the price, uh, for fuel exceeds four hundred, uh, four dollars and sixty-five cent per gallon, um, in accordance with, uh, reports that ha- are put out by the Department of Energy, um, then AMWaste, uh, they do tack on that fuel surcharge. If it falls below the four dollars and sixty-five cent per, um, gallon, um, then we don't pay any surcharges. So, uh, the seven-point-seven million does include fuel surcharges of about two, uh, uh, like I said, over two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. And so, what's included in the FY twenty-four, um, proposed budget for the Integrated Waste Fund, um, is the phase out. I know, uh, Mr. Pittman, uh, referenced that wasn't favorable, but that is what's included in the budget. Uh, September, uh, phase out, um, that comes at a cost of eight-hundred, forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Again, that, the, now that cost does not include any fuel surcharges. So, if the price of fuel, um, goes back up to where it exceeds, uh, the four dollar and sixty-five cent, um, threshold, we will have to, um, take into consideration those fuel charges. I mean, it also does not inc- include any base rate changes. Uh, one of the things that, um, was part of the negotiation and I'm, I imagine will still be part of the negotiation with AMWaste is an increase to the, uh, base rate based on the, uh, CPI. Um, one of the, um, proposals, I guess, I should say, is part of the negotiation was that, uh, we would see a base rate in- increase possibly of five percent, um, based on CPI. But that is still, we're still talking about that. Um, so not including fuel surcharges or any base rate increases. What that means for July, uh, they would still maintain all fourteen routes, uh, that monthly cost being four-hundred, thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Um, and then we would reduce it down, um, five routes to where they'd only cover nine routes in August at two-hundred-eighty-two thousand. Um, and then, um, in September, they would cover, uh, four routes. We would cover ten at a cost of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, um, six hundred dollars. Now, if we, um, um, implement the, or I should say proceed with the September phase out, obviously, we'll have a cost avoidance of, of just over thirty-one thousand per route per month, uh, for every month that we, you know, no longer paying AMWaste and are doing it in-house. Um, but extending AMWaste services through December of two thousand twenty-three for all fourteen routes would require an additional one-point, um, seven, almost one-point-eight million dollars in additional funding. And again, that does not include any fuel surcharges or any base rate increases. So, um, just wanted to provide that information in terms of, um, the cost to AMWaste. And I'm going, uh, turn it back over to John.
And, and let me just interject here, Mayor and Council. Um, AMWaste has done, they are doing a phenomenal job for us. I mean, when you put your yard waste out on your day, I mean, they're there to pick it up and we are doing great, um, with AMWaste's support. And so, they, they, they're doing great work and, and I think we are at a, a, um, a point that we are providing the level, um, of service, quality of service that citizens expect. Um, I wanted them to share these numbers because while AMWaste is doing a good job, we can't sustain paying them what we're paying them. We just can't. And so, I look forward to getting the automated, um, vehicles, um, that we will take inmates off the back of trucks and we'll use fewer trucks and we can be more efficient and do what we need to do. And I think those trucks, as you'll hear or have heard, will start to come in July, August, uh, September timeframe. And I think, uh, staff has recommended that we, uh, use the option that allows us to continue to use AMWaste through December, which I support and, and that's my preference. I'd like to keep them beyond December. We just can't sustain them. And so, we've got to have a plan, an exit plan, that we get to a point that we can measure up in-house, uh, and, and we can, um, we can get our cost back down pre-COVID and before AMWaste. And so, that's our challenge. Would we, uh, you know, AMWaste, great work. They've put us in a good position. We just cannot sustain them going forward. And, um, and so, you need to hear that.
Our future going forward, uh, for, uh, Integrated Waste, we want to be a full-service operation. Uh, with that, you know, it brings, uh, improvements comes with collections, uh, residential collection. For the future, we want to amend the ordinance to maximize automation within our program. Implementation of the one cart system, which is the, the black cart, cart that we have out there currently right now. We want everything to, to be, uh, put in one cart. Everything must be, uh, in one cart and the cart that is issued by the city, the city, city-issue cart, excuse me. No bags, piles, none of the city-issue containers will be collected, uh, with the newest ASL system. Everything has to be containerized. Everything has to go inside. Uh, additional cart fee to be considered with upcoming rate study. Uh, the on-call, uh, bulk collection system has already been implemented. Uh, and we continue to, to advance it with that. Uh, the vehicle identification, the blue and the white, uh, we got the blue, uh, side loader that represents the, the household garbage and we got the white, which represents the recycling. I know it's a little backwards, but it's because that the trucks were already ordered with the blue. So, uh, we just wanted to try to make a, the, uh, determination of recycling and, and household garbage. Uh, it would cost a fortune to try to flip them back and forth. We know that blue is the international color for reci- I mean, international color for recycling. Uh, all levels of service, you know, we want to implement that. We want to put it all on the same day, uh, which is household garbage, recycling, yard waste and bulk. Uh, is a proposal that we would like to implement into our program.
Item B, uh, three B on there, um, you say implementing the one cart system. I think we need to be very clear that that's one cart for household waste and one cart for, um, uh, recycling. It's not...
Correct.
Just one cart.
It's, it's three carts, but a one cart system, yes.
And, and so, when you, when you say that and when you put that out, be sure that you make that distinction. That it's actually two physical carts.
Three, three.
Yeah, three, actually. Yeah, but you're right.
Yeah.
It's three carts.
We need to...
Uh, three carts, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. I, uh, in looking at this, I, you know, I really would like us to take our time on here and just make sure that we've got, uh, absolutes in place. I, I do agree that we need to go ahead and finish out through the year because you got some, uh, you got the spring now that's starting. You've got a lot of, uh, you got a lot of people doing a tremendous amount of yard work now. So, the, you know, it's, it's the, the, the high time of the season. Um, you know, we, we see a lot of revenue. We see a lot of expenditures and cost, uh, and then, um, you know, there's additional fees involved here. There's some, there's some stuff that's not really defined, uh, when I look at this. And I, I still have... And I, I still have a number of questions that, uh, that I want to ask about this hybrids type setup that, that we got. I, 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 I don't know if now's the time to talk about it, but I, I do, uh, want to present something to Council when we go through, uh, our budget hearings here soon. That would probably put this a little more under a microscope so we can get a real close look at it because we do need to understand it, uh, a little bit better and what, what all are the options that are, that are out there. I, you know, that when I look at this, I'm a little concerned about all the cost. There's a lot of hidden cost here that we're not talking about that's going to be passed on to the consumer or the citizens. And I'm really concerned about that. And I just think that, um, being under a microscope with a little more detail would give us a better idea of how to move forward into the future. And that, that, that would be the right thing to do. There's nothing wrong with doing that, but, uh, I'll talk about that a little bit further a little later and, uh, during our budget hearings.
All right, Councilor Begley?
I, I think I'm on a similar page. I, like, there's so many numbers moving around. I, I have no idea, like, the, the net, right? So we're saying we're going to add new ASLS and cut out Am Waste, but then we're, we're saving maybe the ASL and we're showing seven hundred forty three thousand dollars, but that's not, that sounds like per truck. So like, what is that in the aggregate? And then we're adding some additional fees, but then we're also adding the, the commercial collections. So, so between all those different numbers, like, how do those all add up? Like, I, 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 I don't understand how to put that together from, and maybe that comes later because I, I realize I'm new. But just some kind of table that shows all the additions, all the additional revenue, all the additional expenses, uh, and so we can see the net change in the long term.
Okay. All right, I think that's, that's all the questions. Uh, Councilor Begley, do you have another?
I, I was just trying to,
There you go.
And just a clip, I wasn't looking for an answer right now. Just something in a, like an Excel so that we can see the, or, or some kind of table so we can see the net changes.
Okay, I think the Finance Director is here, she heard that. You continue, Mr. Pittman.
Well, again, uh, vehicle recognition, uh, for the household garbage, that's what it would look like. The, uh, blue vehicle would represent household waste. The white represents, uh, recycling. Uh, commercial collection, this is something that we want to add to our, our operation going forward sometime in the future. Uh, the fleet additions, we want to add front loaders and we want to add roll-offs to our operation. Uh, to be able to provide, you know, some service for the uptown, uh, special events, uh, evictions and all those other things that we're not able to service right now. So we just want to add this and, and be a full-service operation, uh, within the city itself. Uh, here's a picture of
A roll-off. What's a roll-off?
Here, here's a picture of a roll-off. The top left. Um, in the middle is a front loader. It's another vehicle that we want to, uh, add to our fleet. Uh, the roll-off, uh, it does, it picks up the open top containers, which is thirty yard down below, left-hand side. At the top right, there's a thirty yard compactor, is a compacters, service that we want to be able to provide to the downtown area and, and some of the internal businesses that we have within the, the city itself. And also the front loader, which is centered in the middle, uh, provides service for a commercial, two-yard dumpster, four-yard dumpster, six-yard dumpster or eight-yard dumpster. In your picture here, you have a four-yard, uh, front-end loaded can at the bottom right.
Uh, go back to the thirty-yard compactor.
Yes, sir.
Give, um, an example of where and why or how that would be used. And project your voice some too.
A thirty-yard compactor, we would like to be able to use downtown, uh, uh, for the new, uh, facility that we have downtown, the new city building. Uh, we can actually, uh, put that down in the, uh, garage area. And, uh, we will, uh, have that, uh, pooled on a, a weekly basis. Uh, we'd be able to load it. Uh, you can, you'd be able to load it with a automated can because this compactor has a tipper on it. And it's a thirty-yard self-contained compactor. It doesn't leak, uh, it, it holds all the garbage, so you don't have to worry about the odor or anything. Uh, we want to use these at, at businesses downtown, restaurants. Uh, we want to use them at the special events, uh, and some of the other locations that we have internally.
And, and so how about the thirty-yard, uh, open top? What situation, where, how would you use that?
Thirty, thirty-yard open top, we like to use them for like C and D constructions. We like to use them for evictions. Uh, we want to be able to use them internally. Uh, we want to be able to also, uh, implement some of those for recycling drop-off centers, uh, in the future.
Okay, sure.
Council, Councilor Barnes?
Um, just for me, I would like to have you send that to me like you did last time, Drell, I appreciate it. Are we getting this out to the citizens so the citizens have some feedback, some kind of feedback on this or something?
You're getting it first.
Huh?
You're getting it first.
Okay.
First.
I see, okay, so we can, then we're going to have some meetings, community meetings and stuff so the people can, we can get feedback to what, from the individuals we represent, you know, so we're known.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, you know, he's talking, obviously talking about in the future what they'd like to do. And so, yeah, citizens would need to, we'd need to share this with them and get their feedback, yes. Yeah.
You can continue, Mr. Pittman.
An overview of what it all would look like once we make the transition and we implement, uh, the ASL within to the system and we phase out Am Waste. Uh, sixteen automated side loaders, we will be using for household, uh, waste. Uh, right now, we currently use twenty-six rail loaders for garbage. Eleven automated side loaders for the green waste that we're going to implement. Uh, six rail loaders for green waste and, and, uh, junk waste. Ten automated side loaders for recycling. Ten ground walls for the bulk waste. Uh, that's a daily total number of fifty-three routes that we will currently be putting out in the future. Pre-COVID, as you can see, waste collection, you know, we had a total of sixty-two routes that we put out there. So there is a reduction in, uh, in our routes and that creates a little bit of efficiency within our operation. Recommendations, uh, maintain Am Waste service through, uh, December two thousand twenty-three. Uh, something that we need in order to continue to make this transition as smooth as possible. Uh, phase out Am Waste services by reducing the number of routes they handle monthly. So we, we, uh, said that five, five and four, the fourteen routes that they have, and that's how we would phase them out. Uh, approve the addition of civilian workers to handle the collection of own, all the rail loaders in preparation providing yard waste collection. Uh, immediate improvement to customer service and employee morale by changing collection days. We're proposing to change the collection days, uh, from, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday to Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, with Friday being a off day. Uh, that would allow us to be, you know, to enhance our, our maintenance, our training. That will also, uh, build our morale, you know, uh, having those consecutive days off. You know, it was set up and designed in the past where Monday and Tuesday, uh, we'd be off on Wednesday. That's when we had a manual operation. That's when we needed a break. You know, we were picking up garbage, uh, manually and that's how that was implemented. But now we are fully automated. So the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is what is being recommended. Uh, finalize the cost. All collection service collected on the same day, as I asserted earlier. Uh, uh, yard waste, recycling, bulk, garbage, all on the same day. Uh, we think that creates a, a lot of efficiency within the program. You don't have to try to figure out, well, what day does my garbage go? What day does my recycling go? Now you will know exactly what day it is. Everything will go on your garbage day. And then, uh, finally, uh, we are, we have started, uh, uh, an aggressive educational program. Uh, we reached out to the TV stations, radios, social media. Uh, we are working with, with our internal staff to, to be able to get the word out going forward. Questions?
All right, are there any questions of Mr. Pittman? It's a good presentation, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, so, um, continuing with Public Works?
Continue with Public Works. Um, the next presentation we're going to provide for you this morning is on Animal Care and Control. But before I, uh, start that, I wanted to introduce you to the new Animal Care and Control, uh, Division Manager, Ms. Kanita Hartnett-Johnson. And just to give you some background on Ms. Johnson, she is a native of Columbus and is currently serves as a Division Manager for Animal Care and Control. She holds a master's degree in organizational leadership and a certificate in human resource management from Columbus State University. She also holds a master's of business administration and a bachelor's in business admin- business management from the University of Phoenix. She has served two Fortune five hundred companies, bringing twenty years of leadership and experience in operations management, customer relations and training and development. As a new Division Manager for Animal Care and Control, I just feel very excited, uh, very, uh, hopeful that she is little in stature, but she is a punch to deal with. And so she has just already taken Animal Care and Control and kind of starting to learn it. And she's had to handle some very challenging, uh, issues that have come up within the last few, uh, weeks, uh, things that we've never seen in animal control before. So I'm going to turn the mic over to her and allow her to give you her update. The update will, uh, consist of what we've been doing, her vision, as well as the audit that was performed on Animal Care and Control a few months ago. She will be given some of the, um, uh, some feedback regarding that and recommendations as well. Kanita?
Good afternoon, or, well, good morning still. Thank you so much, Drell, for the introduction, um, and thank you all for having me. Uh, I'll jump right into it, um, because I know it's been quite a day. So the agenda for today, we will focus on, uh, the introduction, uh, more about the audit that was conducted. We'll also look at the recommendations that were made by the auditor that came in and performed the audit. In addition, we'll give you some statistical data with Animal Care and Control at this time, as well as my vision and a summation of all of it. And of course, any questions that you may have. So an audit for, uh, Animal Care and Control was requested by former city, uh, uh, port, former Counselor John House. And it was approved on August ninth. The audit actually took place August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two and concluded on January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. The scope of that audit actually included the following aspects. Field operations, the front desk operations, shelter operations. Um, she interviewed the advisory board and then, of course, the division manager role. Field operations actually consists of the animal control officers, uh, which I consider my field-facing, um, individuals. They are the ones that, of course, deal with our public and any of their concerns once they call in or report a request to come out and get an animal. At the time that this audit was being performed, the operational hours was Monday through Friday from eight, I'm sorry, from twelve to t- to five P M. The reason why those, uh, changes were made from the normal hours of eight to five was because we were short-staffed. And that's what you're seeing here. The findings of the auditor at that time showed a decline in our staff. And as it been, as it has been mentioned throughout the day, COVID was a major impact. We had, uh, several individuals who suffered with COVID. In addition to my understanding, there was a concern, uh, or there was some talk of Animal Care and Control no longer being part of the city of Columbus. They were looking for other venues. And with that communication, most of our, um, animal control officers and other staff members began to seek other employment. So from, um, a perspective of fully staff, a special enforcement supervisor or a field officers, uh, animal control one and two, that would be a fo- uh, fully staffed, uh, members of ten. By the time two thousand twenty-two rolled around, we had a half that staff of five. Front desk operations. The front desk are the people that actually are the people you talk to when you call in, um, to dispatch any questions or concerns regarding animals in the community. They're also the people that you'll see when you come into the facility. According to, um, our staffing model, our communications officers, fully staffed is three. As you notice, over time, that staffing, uh, decreased and in two thousand twenty-two, we were only down to two. Office interim division manager. Um, that office, of course, consisted of a division manager, the administrative coordinator and a veterinarian. Fully staffed, that is one each with a total of three. In two thousand twenty-two, we only had one. And I also would be remiss if I didn't share that that one person served as the interim division manager as well as her duties as the administrative coordinator. Shelter operations. Now, the shelter operations are the people that actually maintain the shelter. All incoming animals coming in as well as maintaining the ones that are there. That is their sole responsibility. And I wanted to share the actual capacity levels of the shelter. We have forty regular runs for dogs and those dogs are the ones that are both adopt- adoptable and waiting on a five-day hold. Six runs are for quarantine, meaning animals that have come in because they have, um, bitten someone. Six runs are for our dogs in isolation. Uh, most of those animals, they are something that's wrong with them, they need medical attention. And then there are six runs in holding. And those house are recently impounded, um, animals for a total capacity of fifty-eight. Now, I also would like to share with you with our shelter operations, we do have, um, a minimum of twenty-five kittens or cats that we can hold. Uh, we do have a cat quarantine as well and a puppy room. In that, we also have a volunteer coordinator. And that coordinator is responsible for all aspects related to volunteering, uh, donating their time, getting volunteers to come in, um, and also any of our adoption events, they handle those. Our advisory board, um, was also interviewed by the auditor and she made it a mention or wanted to make sure that everyone understood what that board was responsible for doing. Monitoring the operations of Animal Care and Control and rendering guidance and assistance as deemed appropriate, in cor- appropriate, encouraging responsible pet ownership. They also were giving the, um, opportunity to review the annual proposed budget as well as make decisions on the classifications of, um, vicious dogs and or cats. Some of the frustrations that was identified by the auditor at that time, by the board, was, um, they felt that they were not being given the opportunity be, to be as effective as they felt they should be as far as being involved in the day-to-day operations of Animal Care and Control. Some of the meetings that were held at the board, um, was focusing on dangerous dog hearings, proposed ordinance changes, ordinance changes and potential projects for volunteers. Based on all of that, the recommendations made by the auditor, since that completion, we have hired four new animal control officers. So where we were sitting at a number of five, now we are at a number of, um, seven and we are in the process of hiring two more. So we will be at full staff by the end of the month. We have hired a maintenance worker as well as, uh, proposed in the new budget for another one. The maintenance worker is actually the person that cleans our runs that the animals are in on a daily basis. And of course, they hired me. Um, one of the changes that we made in the, um, in the, in this month of May was we were able to change our hours of operation from twelve to five P M, Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday. And we've gone back to the original hours of ten A M to five P M, Monday through Saturday. So we've added an additional two hours back to our offers, uh, operational hours. Um, and this is just the staffing that I mentioned with our officers, we have eight. And our shelter staff is fully staffed as well. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't share this. We have a shelter manager that has been there for, or been with us for over thirty years, thirty-seven years. We have a shelter manager that has been there for, or been with us for over 30 years, 37 years, and she will be retiring March 2023. So we are in the process of looking for someone to come in and take over her position when she gets ready to retire. And I want to do that more sooner than later, because I want that person we bring in to have the opportunity to work with her and learn some of the things that she does on a daily basis. More importantly, finding someone with the skill set that she has, which is medical involved, will be quite difficult. So I would want her to have that opportunity to speak with that person and work with them for a while before she retires. Now, in the previous council meeting, we did have someone to come and speak about tethering, and I will share that with you. But I wanted to share what we've done with the help of the advisory board. A review of the 21, 2021 and 22 board minutes were found these following successes. The introduction of the CBI, the Community-Based Instruction Group for Muskogee County School District. That's actually a partnership we have with Hardaway High School, where young adults come in and they learn about animal control building, and they actually participate in helping maintain the building. So those young adults come in, they help clean, and they learn from some real-life experiences from our employees that are there. We have joint efforts with PAWS to get animals altered, meaning when we have animals come in and they pass the five-day hold and they are now property of Columbus Consolidated Government. PAWS has agreed to come in and we are spaying and neutering those animals. We had a donation of 500 microchips. We received 250 to date. We've not received the other, but to my understanding, the person that was working with us on that is no longer in service. And so we're still waiting to see what they will be able to do, and that was PAWS Humane. Joint efforts with PAWS helping consult owners about alternatives to surrendering their pets. So on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have Pet Surrendering Day, where our citizens in Columbus, for whatever reasons, are surrendering their animals. Well, what we have is a person that is with us, that works with those individuals because they have to schedule that time with us. And what that person does is she works with those individuals to find alternate ways for them to place their animals as opposed to bringing them to Animal Care and Control. And it's been very successful. Board meeting discussions regarding the tethering ordinance. Now, that was what I've mentioned briefly. We did have a person, as I mentioned last week, to come in and talk about the tethering ordinance that we have. And she mentioned that it was ambiguous in its verbiage. Well, we actually had the opportunity to meet with the board, or the board meet, to discuss the tethering ordinance. The discussion was to change the verbiage of the ordinance, and it was actually voted on twice. It was the decision both times to leave the ordinance as it was written. And it was most in part due to Dr. McDermott, who is currently a sitting board member, as well as a practicing veterinarian here in Columbus, Georgia. And you probably can't read it, so I'll read it for you. And just to give you some premise, he was unable to meet the day that the vote was being taken. And so he sent an email to the interim Division Manager at that time, and this is what he stated, and I quote, "Katrina, I would not be able to attend the meeting this week, but did have a few thoughts to share with the board. The last meeting focused on possibly rewording the existing ordinance to only allowing a pet to be placed on a trolley system while under direct supervision. After reviewing the call logs you provided, and I must be honest, they were quite long and I started to skim through rather than read it in detail, it came to, it can be concluded that animal control is taxed with calls. The bulk of calls are about animals improperly chained, tethered or animals without adequate food and water, and animals being left unattended for prolonged periods of time on a trolley system, or being left on a system without proper shelter or nutrition were not a concern. As the law stands now, all animals are considered property. The Animal Control Advisory Board's role, sole obligation, is to ensure that pets are not suffering from neglect, and any proposed ordinance changes must focus exclusively on that obligation. We are not a governing body that has latitude to decide who should own a pet, nor can we push to remove the right of others to own animals by proposing ordinance changes that do not fall under our guidelines. The existing ordinance, Section 5-2.5-7.2 on restraint is clear and concise. Any addition to the ordinance that would require direct supervision would be an overreach by the board. Please accept this as my proxy vote against any such proposed ordinance. As much as I and many other board members would like to see every dog live in a house with HVAC and a fenced-in yard, realistically, we know this will never occur. If it is our goal to improve the quality of life of these dogs, our efforts will likely be better served by focusing on educational programs, city grants, and financial assistance to citizens, respectfully, Dr. McDermott." Animal Care and Control statistics as it stands right now, and these, these statistics are for the period beginning January 1st, 2023 through March 31st, 2023. Our total intake and impoundments are as follows: January, 274; February, 308; March, 307, for a total of 889. Now, I do not have April numbers specifically, but I can tell you that the number has increased. And that is in part to the fact that we do have more people on the streets. We have eight officers that are now patrolling, and we're able to get to calls. Prior to my arrival, we were not getting to all of the calls that we were receiving. At best, we were getting to about 60%. I can tell you now that we get to 100% every day. Animal Care and Control statistics as of January, February, and March with our adoptions. We've had, in January 18, dogs adopted with nine cats. February, 34 adoptions with nine cats, and then with March 26, adoptions with two cats. And I can add to there being an increase number for April. And the reason why is because we are working more on changing what our website looks like, as well as our Facebook page, doing more things on it to grab attentions of our citizens, and of course, working with our partners in the, with PAWS Humane SOS and Animal Arc Rescues. Placement with rescue partners are as follows. Animal Arc, Animal SOS, and PAWS Humane are three of our main rescue partners, although there are others. But they are the ones that we have the most intake with. And so Animal Arc for January had 47 dogs that they rescued from us and one cat. Animal SOS, 31 with zero cats. And then PAWS Humane with the most, with 54 dogs and 13 cats, for a total of 132 dogs and 14 cats for the month. For February, the same, 118 dogs were rescued and 32 cats for all three of the rescues. And then of March, 83 dogs rescued and 16. Now, this is a month, the next couple of months is a very high period where we have a lot of animals coming in. And so most of the time, it is very hard to get those animals rescued because there are so many. But we are working diligently on finding ways to mitigate that. One of the questions that I get often in my short tenure here is, why do we euthanize as many as we have in the last couple of months? And the, the simple answer is, we've been able to take in more. Because I have more people on the streets, we're able to bring in more animals into the shelter. And unfortunately, we can't find homes for all of them. However, we do remain under the national average, remain a no-kill shelter for the months of January, February, and March. We were under the 10%. Now that I'm in this position, and I've had an opportunity to ride, do ride-alongs with my Animal Care and Control officers, and I've sat up front with my communication dispatchers in the front. I've also worked in the back, so every aspect of the shelter, I've had the opportunity to work in. One of the things that I noticed first is that we do need a cruelty investigator, one person that will be able to focus on those types of investigations, such as bites, severe bites. A foster coordinator. I would love to create a foster program within the city. Right now, we are solely relying on our rescue partners, and I would like to have one inside. What does that mean for us? It provides me with another, and this is just my term for easier recognition for me, a bonding system. I have to find another way to get animals out in our, in our communities and attract people to foster them, if not adopt them. So creating a foster coordinator role will give me that leverage. PR or marketing professional, someone who will be able to work with me and the entire staff to create inventive ways to market our shelter and the animals in it. A full-time veterinarian, as well as eight additional control officers. And the reason I've asked for eight, or I would like to see eight control officers, is I actually have the opportunity, as I share with you, to be on the road with our control officers. There were a couple of situations that I was privy to personally that were unsafe for just one officer to handle on his own. And what happened in that instance, and one of those instances, is that we had to call another officer to come in and assist. That took an additional 20 minutes. So now there's a disservice to our citizen, as well as unsafe situation for my control officers. And I felt it better that we would have two per person in a truck at any given day, any given time.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas.
Are all of these additional positions?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I've looked at my budget schedule, and Public Works is not on the schedule to present this, to ask for additional staff.
Well, this is my vision as well.
Yeah, I think, I don't think they made a request for those. It's, she's just sharing her vision sometime down the road in the future, what she would like to see.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. And with the officers, not just any, in my vision for future, I would like to work on certifications such as NACA certification. Those certifications better prepare our officers for the handling of animals while they are out in our communities. I will also, in addition to that, I also see fostering service, fostering services. There are several that I would like to share with you, but one in particular is based on the fact that there are oftentimes, many of our citizens will bring in a dog that they found and present them to us. I would like to provide a service where instead of we taking them in, that person becomes an immediate foster, just as if they were, as if the animal was in my shelter for five days. They're able to hold that dog for five days, but we're able to do all of the same things that we do if they were in the shelter. What that does is that frees up space, and it also introduces a person who may not have considered fostering to become a foster. Adoption counseling. Once someone decides to adopt from the shelter, we provide counseling services for them, letting them know what to expect in the weeks to come. Because once an animal has been in the shelter for an extended period of time, what people don't realize, it takes them a time to come out of that shelter mentality, whether they're fearful, fearful, or scared, or whatever the case may be. We'll be able to walk that person through what to expect while they have, when they have adopted that new animal. Owner support services is something I also have a vision to create for military families that are PCS in here and out of Columbus to somewhere else, and they can't take their animal. What can we do to help them place it? Citizens and their hospitalizations. I have received quite a number of calls since I've been here, where a person will be in a hospital for a short stay, and they don't have anyone to watch their animals. What do we do in that instance? Right now, I don't have anything, but I would like to see something created for that. And then, of course, emergency placement. I've also had quite a number of individuals who will call and ask for assistance because they are no longer able to stay in the home that they're in. They're being, they're having to vacate, and so they will want to place their animal for a short stay until they're able to change their circumstances. Educational tutorials, that's what I'm, something we're working on now, placing them on the website where different questions can be asked by citizens, and we'll have a tutorial or an infomercial type out on the website that they can click on and view anytime they get ready. And then, of course, increase our partner in education with school systems around the city, and a spay and neuter service I would like to have come, become part of Animal Care and Control. On the horizon, a couple of council members, I think, have already received questions regarding the critter tool, a critter mapping tool. The critter mapping tool, just for those that may not know, is a lost-and-found tool that our citizens here in Columbus are able to use without actually having to call into Animal Care and Control. But the tool itself, it will allow someone to go out, put in the information, whether they, thank you, whether they've lost a pet or found one. We're able to go out, they're able to go out on our page, click on lost and found, click on the tool, and enter information related to their circumstance. A map will then come up, and it will show you exactly where the animal was lost or found, and the information, whether you are the person looking for your animal. You'll have your name out there for someone to contact, or if you found an animal, your information will be out there to be contacted. So, and I'll walk you through a short, the short version of it. Here, you're looking at how it comes up. There's an acknowledgement, letting the person know that we are not manning it, but to know that this is information being put out by other citizens. Once you click on the X, it acknowledges that you understand that, and then you're able to submit a request. It looks like we may have some out there already. Yes, so right now, someone has lost their dog. If you click on it, it provides you with information about what the dog looks like. Over on the left, and then on the right, there should be a dot. There it is, it's green. Come down just a bit. If you can span out. A little bit more, there you go. Span out just a little more. It's up in the Highland, come down. All right, span out. Span out just a little bit more, and look in the North Highland area. I think it's where I saw the green dot. Scroll down, or scroll up. In the interest of time, we'll move on, but you'll see that there is a dot, and all you have to do is click on the dot. Based on the grid, on the, on the right-hand side, it tells you the requests, and you'll be able to identify. And you'll be able to ident, see the information of the person that is looking for their dog. Okay. We can come out of this, please, thank you. Also, we are in the process of purchasing an adoption trailer. The adoption trailer will be a vehicle that we will use to go to different sites to showcase our animals. It will also be an opportunity for our team to share information in the areas. We have an opportunity every day to collect information. And that information is related to what types of calls we're receiving based on their location. So in South Columbus, I can tell you, one of the biggest challenges we have there is tethering, improper tethering. And so if we were to do an adoption event over in South Columbus, we would showcase our animals, and then we would do an educational tutorial or an educational moment with the citizens in that area on tethering. So each, each event that we will have, it will focus on something where we will share educational opportunities with them. The horse trailer is something that was requested, and it's not yet been purchased, but it is on the horizon. Website upgrade. We are in the process of updating our website, as well as getting more and more adoption events on the books as well. Now, before we get into questions, I do want to share this with you about the animal control staff. This group of people are probably the most diligent, committed individuals I've ever had the opportunity to work with. While the animal control audit was conducted, one of the things that was shared in there was that those individuals that were there had low morale. Well, the low morale had nothing to do with their commitment to their vision and to their promise to take care of the animal welfare of the animals that were there. They were, their morale was low because they didn't have any help. But now they have help. These also are people that own animals. The average person, the average employee owns at least three animals in that, in the facility. They are animal lovers. They work tirelessly, tirelessly every day to make sure the animals in that facility get the best care while they're there. And I just want to take a moment to recognize and applaud them for their efforts, because when there was no one else there, they worked, and they never gave up despite of what was being said about them or to them on a daily basis. So that is just by spotlight on those people that I work with every day that helped me learn this business. And I could not be more thankful and more proud to work with a great group of people. If there are any questions?
Counselor Begley.
Just to clarify, is this the audit, or is there a separate document that's the details of the audit?
There is a separate document that are the, that gives you the entire audit. I'd be glad to share that with you.
If you can, that'd be helpful.
Absolutely.
Just because of some of this, like the, like in fourteen, which shows the findings, I'd like to see their recommendations on how to address some of these.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
Do you happen by chance to know what, how much we're paying out for a veterin, veterinarian cost?
I don't have the exact numbers, but I can definitely get that information to you.
Okay. I'd like to get that in total, what actually that cost is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis, if I can, sir. So the veterinarian cost is broken down into two different segments. You have the salary, and then you have the materials that he uses to take care of the animals. The materials, about thirty thousand a year. The salary right now is right at about eighty thousand a year. And if you were to, I'm sorry.
Current.
Current, yes. And the, the challenge that we've had is the salary. Most of your young veterinarians coming out of veterinarian school, they want to pay back their loans. And so they're looking for six figures or more. And we were unable to even acquire someone to come in and work part-time to do that. Dr. Hall has been our part-time vet, whom I love and adore, and he has just been a godsend for us because without a part-time vet, we couldn't even operate. So we definitely need to, at some point, look at that salary again and determine what we're going to do about it.
There are, are there not additional services that we tend to use on a voluntary basis? If we can't, if we don't have access to one, do we go out and utilize other services?
You mean veterinarian services?
Yes.
That's if they will be willing to do that. We, you know, we can ask, but a lot of your veterinarians' practices now have become corporate. And because of that, they're limited to what they can do. But Dr. Hall is a retired vet who comes in three times a week to make sure we are okay and that we are meeting the requirements of the state.
We don't have any additional lines where, say, Dr. Hall was not on call, that you could go out and you, do you utilize anybody else? Is there any, is there another line item call that might be missing here?
No, sir. That's it for veterinary.
All right, doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, Counselor.
Ms. Short. I'm sorry, this is on the previous presentation. When you said, when we get all the equipment and everything, that the, the delivery schedule will be, I mean, the pickup schedule will be Monday through Thursday.
Correct.
Right now, if Monday is a holiday, they pick up on Wednesday. What are we going to do?
It will just shift to Fridays? It would shift to that off day?
It would shift to Friday.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that's in the future, so that's not something that's going to happen tomorrow. But it is part of our business strategy in getting integrated ways where it needs to be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Mayor, so the Finance Director have a couple of updates for Public Works and for the Sheriff's Office. And I'm going to turn to her, it's the usual updates related to budget situations.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mrs. City Manager. Good afternoon. So Public Works is on the agenda pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine. That says before a department or office exceeds their budgeted appropriations, they have to come before this council and request additional funding. So we are coming before council today to request additional funding in the general fund for Public Works. There were a lot of repairs, unforeseen repairs and maintenance, particularly to some of our public safety buildings, more specifically for the jail. There was a lot of work, a lot of plumbing issues that we had at the jail and that required us to use a contractor as opposed to us being able to perform that work in-house just to resolve some of those issues. So we are asking for additional appropriation to finish out the rest of FY twenty-three in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. I do anticipate the budget for Public Works in terms of the salary savings that's in the budget will cover the additional operating expense. But this council has to approve the use of salary savings for that purpose, so.
So that's from, from this current fiscal year, the salary savings?
Just FY twenty-three, yes, sir.
All right, any questions of the Finance Director? Doesn't appear to be any.
And, and Mayor, you, you may, of course, and Council may know, of course, at one point, we had no plumbers. And we had situations in the jail on a very regular basis. And we actually took a contractor, through a contractor that was working in the new city hall project, and diverted their experts to the jail to handle plumbing issues. And of course, it came at a, at a,
Premium.
A premium price. And, and then at one point in recent, in the last month or two, I think I shared with you, we were able to hire two plumbers. And it was a father, son, and, and even they insisted on pay that, we had to adjust the pay to get them in, as I shared with you. And so we do have a better situation now with plumbers, but we continue to struggle. And so I would request the approval for Public Works of the three hundred thousand dollars.
All right, we need a motion. Motion second to approve the overage from the twenty-three budget. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
All right. So the next update again is pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine. It's for the Sheriff's Office. In the Sheriff's budget, there are some, again, overages related to some of the issues that we had at the jail, particularly for the utilities. The water is projecting to be over about two hundred and fifty thousand, about additional fifty thousand for the electricity. Operating materials at the jail, we're projecting those to be over at about a hundred and ninety thousand. I do know, I mean, I can't speak for all of the operating materials at the jail, but I do know that some of the vendors that we do have on the annual contract have come back to us and requested price increases. We've been able to negotiate in the purchasing division as best as we can in terms of those, pushing back on some of those increases. But I do know that some of the materials at the jail, some of the vendors have come back with price increases for things such as mattresses and, and those things that we, we must have at the jail. And then there's some fuel overages. We anticipate about a hundred and fifty thousand in, in fuel overages, as well as some additional appropriation for personnel. And obviously, the sheriff can speak more so to that in terms of, you know, the staffing levels and the amount of overtime utilized for the staffing of the jail and other areas in the Sheriff's Office. But I don't anticipate, this isn't a situation like Public Works where it's going, it'll be able to be covered within the department. We're going to actually have to tap into reserves of some sort. Likely, we'll, we may be able to cover it from other departmental, other departments that have come under budget. But the ask for the Sheriff's Office to finish out FY twenty-three is about one point five million dollars.
For gas? That's the total cost?
That's the total cost.
Okay, I thought you said for gas, I thought, man, oh, man, oh, man.
Not for gas.
All right. Any questions of the Finance Director? I get it. Go ahead, Counselor Crabbe.
So are, are these new positions already filled? He's asking, did I hear it right? That he's asking for two new positions also?
No, no.
Okay. I must have, I heard some, okay. So it's all just utilities and?
Personnel overages, particularly as it relates to the overtime. Lots of overtime, and then some other, other expenses at the jail.
Okay, so that, I did hear something about personnel, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now, you did indicate this would, he cannot cover it with savings. So when we do the, what do we call it?
Final budget amendment.
Final budget amendment. You know, some departments will have savings, some will go over slightly, but we would not, will not exceed the bottom line of the overall city budget.
Well, I guess the question, I'm trying to think of how to ask it. If, if there's overtime, a lot of this is overtime, then you'd think there'd be some salary savings to offset it from, from the positions that aren't filled that are creating the overtime. Is that not correct?
I mean, the sheriff can speak to the staffing level in the Sheriff's Office. I do know that they are pretty well-staffed at this point.
But then that begs the question, the over, why the overtime? If they're, if the staff is full?
Well, I,
Because I know, I know most of the overtime we face has been because of this, you know, labor shortage, where we're running into situations where there just aren't enough people. So we've had to put overtime on the table in order to cover, cover the needs.
And I do know that he has some special, he has some operations and so forth that they do, special operations that they work in conjunction with, with other law enforcement agencies that could be to help reduce the crimes.
Yeah, I know, and I, I, he's done a good job, Sheriff, with, with that. I guess I just, I'm a little confused, though, that if, if you've got that budget, if we know we're going to do those operations, I'm just trying to figure out how we got the overtime, if they're, if they're, if they're fully staffed. So. Counselor Tucker.
You want to? Okay, come on. Sheriff's going to come up and answer that question for you?
I actually was going to ask about the salary savings because even though they're pretty well-staffed now, I don't think the staffing has been at the same level throughout the whole entire fiscal year. So I was thinking that it was some salary savings that the sheriff has had that we, you know, don't see, but definitely wanted to talk about the salary savings. I think that it will cover this.
What is that? So will the salary savings cover?
No, but again, you know, the, the city's overall budget, when we, you know, typically, it's after the fiscal year concludes, we come back to balance out all the funds by department in November. And when we do that, various departments come in under budget, salary savings, other things, and some come in slightly over budget. For example, not to call out the city attorney, but we, we know that we're going to have to move some money for the city attorney. And so when we move those, that, those dollars, we balance the city attorney, we balance the sheriff, we balance them all, and the bottom line will not have exceeded the budget that you approved for the previous fiscal year. So that, that was the point I was making.
Okay. Counselor Tucker.
Because I just wanted to clarify. So say, for instance, the sheriff had salary savings. You're saying that even though it's in his department, it just goes to our general fund? And that's how we balance it? It doesn't stay within the Sheriff's Office?
Well, but I'm telling you, he does not have any salary savings.
But over, like, the time he's had salary savings?
Yeah, right, exactly.
No, 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 now, every fiscal year, it starts over.
Okay.
It resets every year.
Yeah, it resets.
So he can't, like, after you have so many, so much salary savings, that's, you're done. If you didn't spend your money, you can't access that money?
That's right, so at the end of the fiscal year, if the police department has salary savings, that salary savings will go and it will enhance our reserve fund.
Okay, so.
They don't get to carry it over and use it for something else. And likewise, with sheriff or anyone else, it would go and it would enhance our reserve fund.
So that helps our fund balance?
Exactly.
When we're talking about, you know, how many days?
That's right.
Whatever. So salary savings goes into the fund balance and helps us in reference to our days that we have.
Yes.
And balancing our, our overall city bu, budget, basically. Okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
You got it.
Trying to step it out.
Yeah.
All right.
I just wanted to address the, I believe that you wanted to ask me about the overtime?
Yes, sir.
Although that we are probably about twenty, about twenty sworn officers from being fully staffed, what happens is that after jail, we have a number, I look at our daily activity report from the jail. We at least have about three to four individuals that go to the hospital every single day. So that means that if we can't pull from our regular personnel that we have to have individuals that come in and work their off day, and they do nothing but guard inmates at the hospital. You're talking about twelve-hour shifts. On average, our, our investigators are working, some days, about sixteen to eighteen hours per day. Over the weekend, although that they were off, they put in probably about twenty hours. Some of them, just from them tracking down certain individuals that we've been looking for. So on average, our, our investigators, that they've been working enormous amount of overtime. And I don't know how we can gauge that, gauge that piece of it, but even at the, but even at the, even in the jail bureau, in order for us to have the per, the proper personnel balance, for us to have officer-to inmate ratio, which we would never meet that, but we try to get as many individuals to come in on their off dates to help us to fill that, because if patrol is busy and can't come and fill those boards, we have to get deputies or correctional officers from the, from the outside on their off dates to come in.
Okay. Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, it's approved.
All right. That's all for me.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, thank you. Move on to the, hang on, Councilor Crabbe.
I wanted to ask you about one of these RFPs. Did the one for May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, number one, historic bus exterior restoration and the Freedom Express Bus Museum? This is the first I've heard of that. Can you go into some detail on that?
And that's the one for what now, May?
It's under May, it's on page eight. And it's, it's the.
Oh, historic bus exterior restoration? Metro's here, but they have a, a museum bus, a Rosa Parks Bus on campus there that's a historic bus, and it has to do with the Montgomery Bus Barkat. And it's one of the older buses. And it appears that, you wanna speak to it? Yes, okay.
Yes, this is a bus museum that Metro has had for well over, probably, um, close to, o- over twenty years. And so it's been there, it's an educational piece where it is stationary there on the Metro campus, where students, we have classrooms and schools that actually go through and hear the history of transportation and of course, the Montgomery Bus Barkat and those things. And so, but again, it's been there for well over twenty years. As a matter of fact, when I was the director of Metro, it's one of the projects that are brought there. And so it has been widely used and a good resource for particularly our students in the community. So they're looking to restore it.
Thank you, Councilor Begley.
Three quick questions for the May twelfth bids. For number four, the feasibility study, is that just a, is that study focused on geographically? Is there space to add nine holes? Or is it also addressed the financial feasibility of, you know, just the long-term cost of adding the nine holes and the additional revenue created?
I think, and Deputy City Manager Hodge can respond to this, but they are certainly looking at a feasibility study as to whether they can expand. They only have nine holes at Oxbow. Whether they can expand that golf course to include an additional nine holes is one of the things that they're doing. And, I'm just reading. And so it looks like on this particular one for the master plan for golf course, courses at Oxbow, that's what they're attempting to do. Was that your question?
I think I understood that point, I just didn't know if there were, is it just, do we have room for additional nine holes?
Well, I think this feasibility study will determine, I think they think that we do.
Right. But are they also doing a, a financial analysis of just that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The second question, on the May seventeenth, the CCG TV operations, do you know the date that the current equipment was purchased, how many years ago?
This equipment was purchased when this building was? Twenty twelve? Twenty twelve.
So eleven years ago, got it. And then last question on number four, the dual axle utility trailers. Do you know the purpose of those fifteen trailers? The purpose of those?
That would be something in public works. Deputy City Manager, do you know? Typically, they, they will purchase a, a body and then trailers to, and, and then they, cause they may come from two different vendors. And then, you know, and that makes the whole truck. You don't get, and, and certainly I can help, real short, I believe she left to explain it. But you will see on many of the agendas where they purchase the body in one purchase and then the trailer may come from a different vendor. And, and, and that's how they, they put the truck together, if you will.
Okay, I guess what, so these replacing existing, like these upgrades, okay.
Yeah. And sometimes they may purchase the trailer and not need a new truck.
Okay.
So it just, I don't, these are, this is out to be it, I don't know specifically, but I can tell you that's how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I'm looking at the automated speed detection for school zone, the very last one. I've had calls from both the people representing the sheriff's department and people representing the police department, and they have different ideas of how this ought to be, this RFP ought to be awarded. When this comes to the committee to make the decision on who gets the RFP, would we typically include someone from the school district to work with them on selecting a company? Or is this, I, I guess I don't have enough information on how this decision will be made.
Yeah, and, and so typically, we would have people who are knowledgeable. And so in this case, I would think on that selection committee, certainly there will be someone from the school district. But as I recall, there is an RFP out through the police department.
In addition to this one?
No, no, it's all in, in the same, it's, it's all together. I, I think the city mayor, of course, the police department has, for the school zones, I believe they have an RFP out that's pending and.
And there were some questions, and they have delayed them so that they can get some of those questions answered and back out to the vendors.
And the school district will play a role in that.
Yeah, CPD initiated this process with regards, matter of fact, came to council to get an ordinance, I think, so that it could, we could enforce it with automated LiDAR, I guess, laser type radar. And to my understanding, they had, they were trying to get it as a sole source, but it, it didn't fit because there were others that provided the same thing. So they've done the RFP, the RFP is underway, and I think it's due back in on the eighteenth.
I don't know the date that it's due back, but there's an active RFP.
But they will work with the school district, school district's involved in it.
What is the sheriff's department involved in this?
The one that I know about is the school, is, is CPD.
Because I've been told that the sheriff's department already has a contract with a vendor to do this.
Well, I think that contract has to actually be done in conjunction with the school district. And I think, I'm not sure, and we can talk about it later, but I think the, the, what the sheriff's department did was tried to, attempted to leverage an existing contract out of county that somebody already had in place in order to move forward on it. Police department was moving through our process of putting it out for an RFP so that the local wishes and, and needs are expressed through that, the details of the RFP. And I, I, I thought it was coming back in the next couple of weeks.
On the, M nineteen, yes, sir.
Nineteen. The RFP that had been put out. No, we don't look at, we don't look at RFP, there's a, there's a group that, yeah.
So, so what I know is that an RFP is on the street, put out by the Columbus Police Department. And we are going through, they are going through that process. I'm not involved, but they're going through that process. And as that process come, as they, in order for it to move forward, the school district will be involved with CPD. And of course, I hear you saying that I don't know about that other part you're talking about. I can tell you what's on this, what this is.
Well, I, I guess I'm just real, I, I don't know, concerned about, I have been told that there are three companies in the state of Georgia that do this and that only one of them got the RFP. And that, you know, that's a, that's a concern to me. I think we need to be very open with whoever, whoever qualifies to receive the RFP. And I've been told that that has, has not happened. And I have been told that the person who represents that company has tried to get responses from the city and has not gotten returned phone calls. I don't, I'm not accusing anybody of that, I don't know that to be true. But that was what I was told, and it's really concerning if that's not, if it's not going through our usual procedures. I'm a little concerned that you say that CPD put out the RFP. Do they typically do that? Don't we put out the RFP?
Well, when I say CPD, it would be, they go through the purchasing department. It's like Metro put out an RFP for buses through the purchasing department. CPD will put out an RFP through, that's when I say CPD.
They didn't physically send it out?
No, no. And, and so this RFP has been out for a while by CPD. So.
Well, I.
Well, and, and I will say, you know, now, our process is that vendors should not be calling me, you, or anyone when there's an RFP, trying to speed up the process or do anything, because they sign a document that they will be disqualified if they do that. They sign a document that disqualifies them, is that right?
That's correct.
If they do that. And so that should not be happening.
Would you call all those people that are calling me then and tell them?
Well, well, they probably don't want you to tell us that they're calling you.
Yeah, they oughta know better than that.
And so I, I say to you that, you know, vendors will try and speed up the process and try and direct you to their company and, and so forth. And, and if they were calling CPD, CPD should have been referring them, as I do, to purchasing Andrea McCorvey. And if Andrea knows that they talked to me or you or anyone else, they're gonna disqualify them.
Well, I will tell you that I have gotten a phone call from both someone from the CPD and someone from the sheriff's office. So if you wanna disqualify both of those folks under that rule, I understand you're doing that. But that was, I got a call from both parties.
Well, no, I'm saying from vendors is, is what was my.
Well, the call that I received was from those two departments saying, this is the vendor that we want you to approve.
Well.
Both of them did that.
And let me just say this, they should not be doing that, and that's a problem.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
It is.
Because that's what gets people in trouble. In jail, I, I mean, I just, trouble, that's what gets you put in jail when that happens.
That gets you put in jail? Is that what you're saying?
All right.
Okay.
Count, Councilor Tucker.
I, I'm just telling you.
I'm so sorry for laughing. Does this?
Especially in Metro Atlanta.
Oh, yeah, all the time. Does, does this RFP coincides with the school traffic impact study that we're doing? It's, it's kinda like, the one feeds into the other, the, the school traffic impact study.
So I don't know all the details of.
I know, and that's, and really, that's what.
Because you know what? I don't get involved in.
We're trying to get a little clarification.
The stuff, but she can.
And, and the reason why.
Cause I don't.
Cause, I mean, of, of course, no, no one wants to go to jail, I don't think. I, you know, we sit and watch the news and we know Phoenix City makes a lot of money.
Oh, no, 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 we don't do those, yeah.
Okay.
No, not at all, no.
Yeah.
So I didn't understand your question.
But no, 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 what I wanted to know, because if we're doing the speed detection, school safety enforcement, will it eventually be ticketed? Because the reason why I was asking, it could possibly be a revenue stream if that was something that was, you know, that would come out of this, cause we're doing this, um, school traffic impact study. And then we have this RFP.
I think in the ordinance that this, or the resolution is bypassed, it does say that they, they will be ticketed, but only if they're over a certain mile per hour.
In the school zone.
But in the school zone, it's not, but there's no red light cameras.
No red light cameras.
Speeding cameras, it's just in school zones to try to protect the kids.
So in the school zones, if they're going above a certain speed limit, they could possibly be ticketed.
They will be ticketed.
Oh, will be ticketed, y'all better slow down. We, we'll be ticketed. So what I was trying to see is how would that revenue stream, where would it go? Would it go to public safety? Would it go to the general fund? Or would it go to CPD? Would it go to split between the sheriff, the school? I mean, it's so many questions, like, where would this, these funds go? Because people speed, and I, I will, I'm gonna add this, one, one last thing in reference to this. During spring break, Steamwell Road, it was a detail, spring break. It was fifty-four people that was in violation for speeding and was pulled over based on the report. This is spring break. People speeding on Steamwell Road, and you know this, all the time. So just think about fifty-four times whatever the hundred-some-dollar ticket. We, we probably will get some funds.
Yeah.
From the school district.
That's right. And, and speaking of speeders, someone passed me on Steamwell Road yesterday. On the double A. Every morning when I'm out walking, I watch during school cars going around other cars.
In, in the rush to go nowhere.
A thousand feet from a school zone, I mean, from a crosswalk on Steamwell.
It's, it's bad on Steamwell, I mean, it's bad everywhere.
Don't get me on Steamwell, but yeah.
Steamwell, St. Mary's, if you travel those school zones, North Star Drive. But the, the one thing, you know, is I know it could possibly be a revenue.
Yeah.
Stream. So I was just trying to see exactly where the funds will, will be placed.
So I don't know the, how the RFP will break down as.
Well, yeah, right, we, all of the specifics in terms of the revenues, I mean, we, those will have to be negotiated.
That's right.
But in terms of where the money goes, it would be a general fund revenue source and what will, you know, in support of activities, I would say, of public safety departments within the general fund. So it's general fund revenue, though.
So public safety department, that's all underneath the umbrella of public safety.
It would be all under the umbrella of the general fund.
Ca- Councilor Begley.
Just want to quickly comment, I, I did see this integrates with the Flock system. And so my understanding is this does help, you know, if there's a warrant out for a specific plate, this does help overall public safety. So I think it's great that we're adding more cameras.
Yeah. But.
All right, that's all.
Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
Okay, well, let's move on to the clerk.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For the clerk's agenda, item one is for information only. This is a certificate of need application of the Rehabilitation Hospital of Columbus for costs over, overruns related to the establishment of their forty-bed comprehensive inpatient physical rehabilitation. Item two is a resolution changing the regular scheduled council meetings for the month of June by.
Motion second to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? All right, that.
Mr. Mayor, I did just want to go over. Mr. Mayor, I did just want to go over those, the new meeting dates for June. Currently, we are not scheduled to have a meeting on June sixth. June thirteenth council meeting will be at nine o'clock a.m. The added council meeting will be June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It's going to be at nine o'clock a.m. For June twenty-seventh, we're going to start at five thirty p.m. Item number three, this is a resolution excusing Counselor Kogle from today's meeting.
Motion, motion approved. The resolutions, number three and four, excusing Counselors Kogle and Garrett. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? They're excused.
Next, for item number five, we have the Employees Benefits Committee. We received a memorandum from the H.R. Director submitting the results of the survey for the Public Safety Representative. Ms. Rachel Blanks was selected to succeed Deputy Chief.
All right, there's a motion and a second to confirm. Any discussion on Ms. Blanks? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Confirmation.
Item six is an email correspondence from Ms. Lisa Thomas-Cutts, the KCBC Director requesting the seats of Ms. Alyssa Williams and Mr. Douglas McLeod Jr. be declared vacant due to a lack of attendance.
Motion second to declare those seats vacant. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, there's a motion to receive the minutes. Is there a second? All right, there's a motion second to receive the minutes from the boards. All in favor, say aye. Any, any opposed? They're approved.
Next, we have board appointments. We will start with the mayor's appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. The Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees, the seat of Dusty Wilson, Mr. Mayor, he is interested.
Renominate. Motion to confirm and a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Wilson is reappointed.
For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, Mr. Mayor is working on a, an appointment for this seat. Next, we have the City Manager's appointment to the Pension Fund Employees Board of Trustees. He has stepped out. He did advise that he was interested in reappointing Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodman.
All right, there's a motion and a second to confirm, Ms. Goodman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have council appointments ready for confirmation. Region six, Regional Advisory Council. Ms. Latasha Morse was nominated to succeed Ms. Ann Davis.
Motion and second to confirm Ms. Morse. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? She's confirmed.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. For the Board of Family and Children's Services, Ms. Gwendolyn McIntosh has expressed an interest in serving another term if a member of council wanted to make that nomination. Thank you. Council Crab has made that nomination, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. We also have the seat of Tallulah Palua. This seat is open for nominations. We have outlined the six categories that any new appointees must fall under in order to serve on this board. We have the pediatric healthcare provider, active or retired, emergency responders, active or retired, law enforcement personnel, active or retired, private, private child welfare service providers, active or retired, alumni of the child welfare system, and six former foster parent. Next, we have the Columbus Aquatics Commission. We have the seat of Christopher Kennedy. He is eligible to succeed. We have not confirmed with him if he is interested in serving another term. We also have the seat of Bruce Samuels. He is not eligible to serve another term. This seat is open for nominations. For the Development Authority of Columbus, Counselor Garrett is nominating Franklin Carl Douglas to fill that expired term of Counselor Begley. Are there any other nominations? And Counselor Crab? Mr. Mayor, we will bring this back for a vote tabulation at the next meeting.
Okay.
Key Columbus Beautiful Commission, the seat of Eddie Florence, Courtney Johnson, William Bandy, and Lee Jordan, all are eligible to serve another term. We have heard from Courtney Johnson. She is interested in serving another term if a member of council wanted to make that nomination. Thank you. Counsel Tucker has made that nomination, and we'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. We also have the seats of Dr. Coretta Venable and Matt Horn. Both are not eligible to serve another term. These seats are open for nominations. Next, we have the Region Six Regional Advisory Council, the seat of Cynthia Smith. She is not eligible to serve another term. This seat is open for nominations. For the Retirees Health Benefits Committee, we have Mr. Mike Massey. He does not desire reappointment. And we also have Renee McAnany. We have not confirmed with Ms. McAnany if she is interested in serving another term. And then we have for the Valley Partnership Joint Development Authority, the seat of Joseph Brandon. He is interested in serving, and Counselor Thomas is making that nomination. And Mr. Herman Lewis is interested in serving another term if a member of council wanted to make that nomination. Mayor Protem Allen has made that nomination, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have a request to go into executive session to discuss. You can turn your light on. All right, Counsel Tucker?
Yes, I, I wanted to thank Deputy Center Manager Lisa Goodman for helping me. But we will be hosting a town hall to discuss parks and rec issues in District Four and also some of the public safety concerns on May eleventh from six to eight. All are invited. I just wanted to make sure I get it on the council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Executive session has been requested to discuss real estate procurement and litigation. I need a motion so that we can- All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? All right, motion second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session. We'll need to clear, clear the chambers. All right, we are back in regular session. We had been in executive, excuse me, we've been in executive session to discuss litigation and, and real estate procurement. There were no votes taken. We need Mayor Protem up here to cast a vote so that we can exit. But before we do, I'll, I'll make mention that we have our budget hearings beginning. And right now, it's about seventeen after two. We'll begin those at two thirty. First, we've got Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I don't know if this is for the city attorney or the city manager, but we've been having issues with the, the eighteen-wheeler's parking on Buena Vista Road. I was made aware by some business owners. The one that's on the side of the old post office, which is federal property, we have squatters in that area, like actually in the building. I don't know what we need to do to reach out. I talked to Director Ryan Pruitt, and he was saying he was having issues reaching out to contact somebody, like via phone. They've been sending messages and no contact. And it's every time we have to basically pay, we're paying out of the city budget because we can't put it on the, the post office because it's federal. So I'm just asking if we can somehow, I don't know if we need to go congressional or senate, but we need to find a way to get an actual phone number to speak with somebody on, in reference to their property on Buena Vista Road, the old post office. Yeah. So all I'm asking is if we can get somebody to, to reach out to Congressman Bishop or whoever it is that they need to reach out to, to make calls. Because now you have, you know, squatters as well in that old post office building along with the truck, illegal truck drivers parking.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And there's a motion and a second to adjourn. And before I call the question, don't forget, two thirty will be short break. Two thirty, we'll be back in session for budget hearings. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.